Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Hewitt, Chair of the Prince George's County Planning Board, and the Planning Board is now in session for Thursday, July 23, 2020. Of course, in an abundance of caution resulting from the COVID-19 virus, this is the Planning Board's 17th virtual meeting utilizing online phone and video capabilities. And during these challenging and unprecedented times, the Commission remains steadfastly committed to promoting a safe environment for our public, our applicants, our stakeholders, and our staff while continuing business operations to propel Prince George's County forward. I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone of the participation guidelines for our hearings. Speaker preregistration and pre-submission of comments and exhibits is required. All participants must preregister and all materials must be submitted by 10:00 a.m. on the Wednesday before the Planning Board meeting as shown on the screen. Registered speakers and presenters connecting through a computer, tablet, or smartphone can join the meeting with the link provided via the email from the Planning Board office. Online-registered participants may be prompted to install GoToMeeting software in order to participate in the process. Registered speakers may listen or participate in the meeting using a phone line, and participants may dial the call-in number provided in the email. We ask all participants to mute your phones when not speaking. Please do not put your phone on hold. To eliminate audio feedback, only one connected device with sound should be in a room at a time. Of course, the public may continue to watch Planning Board meetings streamed live, or if you wish to become a person of record, you may sign up on our online web form. And please note the screen for instructions for both. We thank each of you for your flexibility, cooperation, and support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion during our new normal. As always, we would like to begin our program today, our hearings today, taking a moment of silence in honor of the individuals and loved ones throughout our community and the nation who passed away since our last Planning Board meeting of July 16. In our very own Commission family, Paul Chapman passed away. He's age 36. He was the brother of Jillian Chapman, who works for the Commission's Department of Health and Human Resource Management, and also is the Vice Chair of the Commission's Diversity Council. We want to remember the growing number of victims of the widespread coronavirus, COVID-19. Oh, stop. Can you stop? Please put me on hold, thank you.
Nothing that you're saying is coming through in the meeting.
On the stream or on the...
On the stream. Well, no, I'm in the meeting.
Because Dorothy's texting me too. Everybody's texting me, but I couldn't stop to. I need somebody to help me. So what do I... Do I need to go through all that again?
Yep. You need to talk it to yourself.
Okay.
I thought something was wrong with mine, and I just couldn't hear you.
So what...
I'm here in the corner texting you and saying you can't hear that.
They're saying my sound is out, yeah. They're all texting now. Okay.
We can hear all of them, all the other Commissioners.
So why... So we don't know why?
I think, I think, actually, you know what?
Is it that thing? What's that thing?
Let me just unload this.
I'll text you.
Okay. Let's do a check now.
Okay, so we're having some technical difficulties. We're doing a check.
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you.
We can hear you now.
Okay.
But we can hear anything you said.
Yeah, we... I got that. And I was so profound. No, okay.
We know that.
So, okay, let me try this again, and I apologize. So, good morning. The Prince George's County Planning Board is now in session for Thursday, July 23, 2020. In an abundance of caution resulting from the global spread of the COVID-19 virus, this is the Planning Board's 17th virtual meeting utilizing online phone and video capabilities. During these challenging and unprecedented times, the Commission remains steadfastly committed to promoting a safe and healthy environment for our public, our applicants, our stakeholders, and our staff while continuing business operations to propel Prince George's County forward. I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone of the participation guidelines for our hearing. Speaker preregistration and pre-submission of comments and exhibits is required. Well, not comments, but exhibits is required. All participants must preregister and all materials must be submitted by 10:00 a.m. on the Wednesday before the Planning Board meetings as shown on the screen. This has been a hard and fast rule for the last several months. All participants must preregister and all exhibits must be submitted by 10:00 a.m. on the Wednesday before the Planning Board meeting as shown on the screen. Registered speakers and presenters connecting with a computer, tablet, or smartphone can join the meeting with the link provided by the Planning Board office. Online-registered participants may be prompted to install GoToMeeting software in order to participate in the process. Registered speakers may listen or participate in the meeting using a phone line. Participants may dial in the call number provided via the email. We ask all of the participants to mute your phones when not speaking. Please do not put your phone on hold. And to eliminate audio feedback, only one connected device with sound should be in a room at the same time. Of course, the public may continue to watch the Planning Board meetings streamed live as shown on the screen there, or if you wish to become a person of record, you may sign up on our online web form. And please note the screen for instructions for either one. We thank you for your flexibility, cooperation, and support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion during our new normal. As always, we commence our Planning Board meetings with a moment of silence for those in our community and in our nation who have passed away since our last meeting on July 16. In our Commission family, we extend condolences to Jillian Chapman upon the loss of her brother, Paul Chapman. Jillian works with the Commission's Department of Human Resource Management, and she is the Vice Chair of our Diversity Council. We also want to remember the over 21,000... It's actually 21,418 confirmed cases of COVID virus in Prince George's County. Many of those have recovered, thankfully, but we want to remember them and their families, and particularly those 727 fatalities. Those are people's loved ones, maybe loved ones of some of us participating today. So we extend our condolences to them. We also want to remember Patrick Ellis, the iconic popular D.C. gospel broadcaster who was the cornerstone of Howard University's WHUR, host of The Gospel Spirit and Sunday morning gospel shows for over four decades. Throughout the nation and the world, we want to remember Tony Taylor, age 84, former Major League Baseball Philadelphia Phillies infielder and coach. Joanna Cole, age 75, creator of the Magic School Bus books and series, Ms. Frizzle, which would lead children on field trips to explore science, health, space, and more. Phyllis Somerville, age 76, who was the stage TV and film actress who appeared in Little Children and also on TV shows such as Law &amp; Order, NYPD Blue, and The Sopranos. Nina Kapoor, age 26, CBS New York news reporter who died after falling from the back of a rental moped in New York. Galen Gord, age 55, actress who died after a long battle with cancer just one day before her 56th birthday. Travell "Black Magic" Mezzion, age 24, who was the undefeated welterweight boxing champion who died in a car crash. Ekaterina Alexandra Vaskia, who was a 20-year-old Olympic Paris figure skater who died after falling out of a window. Can you all hear me now? Can you hear me? Can you check if you can hear me?
I'm calling.
Hi, this is a test. Can you hear us, please?
They said no.
Madam Chair?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I left off... We have Daniel Androl, also the 20-year-old son of a federal judge, Esther Salas, who was killed by a gunman as he opened the front door of their home to a hail of gunfire. This was a federal judge in New Jersey. So his dad was standing behind him and was all... He was a... is a criminal defense attorney, but he is still amongst the living. But the 20... Tragically, the 20-year-old son was killed. So those are amongst our people who passed away in the past week. Also, I wanted to take a moment to... For any of you who lost persons in your life or loved ones, we extend our deepest condolences. Now, I have to take a moment to share some other losses. The United States lost two iconic civil rights champions this past week. Ironically, both on the same day, July 17, 2020. The first, C.T. Vivian, age 95. Though perhaps not as well-known as the second person, he spent a lifetime protesting and fighting for equal rights well before the civil rights movement took center stage in the 1960s. In 1947, he began participating in restaurant sit-ins in his hometown of Peoria, Illinois, in an effort for black people to be able to be served, to get a bite to eat in restaurants just like their white counterparts. And just like in what happened in the rest of the world or much of the rest of the country, these restaurants and lunch counters did not allow black people, let alone to even enter the restaurants, let alone serve them. Mr. Vivian was also a member of the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, known as SNCC, and participated in the Freedom Rides. In Selma in 1965, he championed voting rights for African-Americans, was knocked down and punched in the nose in front of a national news camera for everyone to see, and it was a good thing it was captured by the news. Courageous and dignified, he managed to get back up, blood dripping from his face, continue his advocacy for voting rights for African-Americans in his very dignified style. A member of the SCLC Southern Christian Leadership Conference with Dr. King, and he also developed an educational program to send students to college with scholarships, which ultimately was the forerunner of Upward Bound. He was a field officer for Reverend Martin Luther King. He was whipped with chains, endured constant beatings, was nearly forcibly drowned on an Atlantic beach. He led boycotts and retails and other businesses... He led boycotts against retail and other businesses that refused to serve African-Americans, restaurants that refused to service, banks who refused to give loans for mortgages, protested redlining, which precluded blacks from moving into certain neighborhoods. And he was a staunch advocate for nonviolence and led countless peaceful protests through angry, violent mobs, powerful water hoses turned on them, and vicious dogs sticked on them, all to secure equal rights, voting rights, housing opportunities, business and restaurants to service, which ultimately led to the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Voting Rights Act of 1965. So in 2013, C.T. Vivian was quite deservedly awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the nation's highest civilian award by President Barack Hussein Obama for his lifetime of courageous advocacy for civil rights. And that... What a lifetime it was, five years short of reaching the age 100. So that was Reverend Cordy Tindell Vivian, affectionately known as C.T. And if you don't know, now you know. The second civil rights icon that we lost on Friday was no stranger to most of us. Congressman John Lewis, one of 10 children born to sharecropper parents in Troy, Alabama. Witnessing the rampant racism and atrocities as a child, he recognized early on the need to fight for civil rights and joined the movement as a very young man. As a college and seminary student in Tennessee, he organized student sit-ins at Nashville lunch counters, and the sit-ist movement was responsible for desegregation... Desegregating Nashville lunch counters. At a mere 23, he became chairman of the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee. Also at 23, he was one of the Big Six leaders of the groups that organized the iconic 1963 March on Washington. And at a mere age of 23, he spoke eloquently to the crowd of nearly 300,000 people, again, at age 23. He was one of the original 13 Freedom Riders and organized bus boycotts. He was beaten in South Carolina by angry mobs with chains, lead pipes, baseball bats. His efforts resulted in getting arrested 40 times, and he was imprisoned for 40 days in Mississippi. Hence, the birth of his mantra regarding the need to get in trouble, good trouble, necessary trouble, to achieve change and civil rights to which we are all entitled, a mantra that he lived by and held fast to all the days of his life. He was beaten when he organized voting rights campaigns. On March 7, 1964, on what would become known as Bloody Sunday, 24-year-old year-young Lewis peacefully led over 600 marchers from Selma to Montgomery, Alabama, across the now infamous bridge, still named after Confederate slaveholder and Ku Klux Klan Grand Dragon Edmund Pettus. Confronted on the other side by Alabama state troopers with billy clubs, nightsticks, who discharged tear gas, Lewis was beaten and suffered a fractured skull and bore the permanent scar on his forehead for the rest of his life. And you would frequently see him rubbing that forehead. He literally left his blood on that bridge and continued to march across that bridge, named after that slaveholder and Ku Klux Klan Grand Dragon, for every anniversary, every 10-year anniversary. Lewis later ran for the United States House of Representatives from Georgia's 5th District and won, serving 33 years in Congress by the time of his passing. He too was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom, quite deservedly, by President Barack Hussein Obama. He maintained a philosophy of nonviolence and hope, stemming from a period when churches were bombed and people were lynched, but he never lost that optimism, that spirit of hope, and he was forgiving. Forty-eight years after Lewis was attacked and beaten by a KKK member at a South Carolina bus station, he was contacted by that very same man who reached out to apologize for his act of hatred. It was a very sincere apology, and he went on to apologize to others, saw the error of his ways. He had the guts to apologize, and Lewis had the grace and mercy to forgive, and they ultimately became friendly. Congressman Lewis literally dedicated his life to championing equal rights and civil rights. John Lewis, we thank you for getting into good trouble for which we all... From which we all benefited. Finally, yesterday, July 22, America lost a third civil rights champion, Charles Evers, age 97, brother of the murdered civil rights activist and NAACP field activist Medgar Evers. He took... Charles took over as Field Secretary for NAACP upon the murder of his brother. He ultimately became the first African-American elected as mayor of any city in Mississippi post-Reconstruction, when he became mayor of Fayette, Mississippi. I say this because... And I took my time because we must remember and thank our courageous civil rights advocates who literally gave their blood and dedicated their lives in the quest for civil rights for all of us. We owe them all a huge debt of gratitude, and in their memory, we can never become silent or complacent about injustice, and we must never fail to vote. May we have that moment of silence for all of the persons I mentioned today. Thank you. Okay, finally, in the area of announcements. Again, we're coming towards the end of July, which is National Parks and Recreation Month, National HIV Awareness Month, and Breach Parents Awareness Month. And there's no greater loss. It is... Well, okay. It is July 23rd. And July 23... Famous events that took place on July 23rd. In 1966, Frank Sinatra's "Strangers in the Night" hit number one on the charts, later receiving the Best Record Grammy. 1973, July 23, President Nixon refused to release White House tapes of conversations pertaining to the Watergate break-in and cover-up. So Special Prosecutor Archibald Cox and the Senate Watergate Committee promptly moved to subpoena the tapes after 6:00 p.m. that very same evening, 47 years ago today. July 23, 2019, on this day, one year ago, the United States Senate finally passed a bill extending the 9/11 victim compensation fund to 2090, ensuring that the fund in support of the courageous first responders and their families will never run out of money. The billions will be authorized through 2090 for the first responder heroes who suffered from cancer and other illnesses related to bravely coming to the rescue at the World Trade Center and others of Ground Zero. It was named after the fallen New York police officer, James Zagrada, and money will go to their families, too. We thank you, Jon Stewart, who shamed the Senate, Luis Alvarez, who died shortly before passing, and for the law, for whom... And for countless others. And then finally, today, on this day, July 23, 2020, today, it is opening day at National Stadium. It is the Nats versus the Yankees, and Dr. Fauci will throw out the first pitch. He's a huge Nats fan, and... But he's from New York, so he's a former Yankees fan. So we want to... We'll have some semblance of baseball today. And finally, this week, we celebrate the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. This federal Civil Rights Act became effective 30 years ago, this week on July 26, 2020, and prohibits... No. This week on 1990, and prohibits discrimination based on disability. It also requires covered employers to provide reasonable accommodation to employees with disabilities and imposes accessibility requirements on public accommodations. To commemorate this occasion, on this coming Saturday, July 25, at 10:00 a.m., Jessica Cox, the world's first AAA pilot... And I call her AAA because she is the world's first armless, abled aviator who will fly into College Park Airport on an accrued plane this Saturday. So that's really... It's really, really important, and you can watch it actually streamed as well. So I will be there to greet her, safe socially distanced, but it's just a fantastic thing. And we at the Commission, of course, not only adhere to the ADA requirements, but embrace them as well. And finally, census. There you can see Jessica... You can see Jessica Cox. Take a moment to look at that. And finally, we in Prince George's are proud to be counted. It is imperative that we complete our census. I have to say this, but time is running out for us. So tell everybody you know to complete your census. We do not want to leave any money on the table. We do not want to... We want to get every bit of congressional representation to which we are entitled. We are proud to be counted, and also this Saturday, July 25, we are having a census food distribution, and we're doing that every weekend through mid-August to distribute food. I did it this past weekend, and while the people are coming to pick up food in the hard-to-count areas and where we have food insecurities, we're also asking them to complete their census, or trying to encourage them. Again, the Planning Department Speaker Series will take place on Wednesday, July 29. Pandemics, protests, and planning is the next topic, which will... Which will talk about the intersection between health, racial equality, and urban planning. And finally, the Department of Parks and Recreation Grab and Grow Program continues to provide lunches for youth and teens at nine locations throughout the county. And they are listed on our Parks and Recreation website. And without further ado, thank you so very much. I'm going to do a count.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I just have one correction.
Okay.
Once a Yankee fan, always a Yankee fan.
And I understand that. I know you're from New Jersey. By being from New York, I understand that, too. Fauci says he's... He says he's a Nats fan. He's switched, so...
That's his National League team.
Okay. All right, I got it. Okay. So without further ado, we're going to check on our participants today. We have Vice Chair Bailey.
President.
Commissioner Washington.
President.
Commissioner Geraldo.
President.
Okay, I see we have our lead counsel for today, David Warner, who's our principal counsel.
President.
We have our Planning Director, Andre Checkley, who's physically present here today. We have our Planning Board Administrator, Jessica Jones. We have Ryan Cron holding the fort down here with technology, and we're keeping him busy today with that. We have Senior Planner Kenny Flanagan over here working the PowerPoint. We have our technical hearing writers here, Lee Pracka and Marie Proctor, working everything as well. And we have our Chief of Development Review, James Hunt, on the line. So... And then, of course, we have many, many other staff, too. But that... We're holding down the fort here. So I am going to ask for a motion regarding the draft minutes of July 9, 2020. We have a motion...
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Geraldo, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Is there any discussion? Vice Chair Bailey?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it, 4-0. So the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And I just need to double-check. Charles Harding signed up for our consent agenda. Charles Harding, are you on the line?
Madam Chair, this is James Hunt. I just received an email from Mr. Harding this morning that confirmed he was signed up. He was actually trying to sign up for Marlboro Gateway.
Got it. Thank you. So we have... So we have him on that. Thank you. Okay, so I know we had him sign up for both. I thought this was a mistake. Okay, so without further ado, is there anyone here to oppose the staff's recommendation on Item 4D, or any board member who wishes to discuss? And if not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, approval of Item 4D?
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second by Vice Chair Bailey, and seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. Vice Chair Bailey?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
But I.
Okay, the ayes have it, 4-0. The next item on our agenda is Item 7, which is a detailed site plan 19042, Branchville Gardens. There is a request to... For continuance to September the 24th.
How are you? Are you expect...
Okay, so I want to make sure we have everyone that we need. Mr. Bishop, are you on the line?
Present, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Lynch, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm present, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm going to... I also have Ivy Thompson on there, but I also want to... Since it's a request for a continuance, I just want Mr. Bishop to succinctly take us through that.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Planning Board, for the record, Andrew Bishop with the Urban Design Section, Item 7, is a request for a continuance, as you mentioned, and in a letter dated July 7, 2020, included in your backup for the case. The applicant's representative requested a continuance of the DSP 2 from July 23 to September 24, 2020. The continuance is necessary to allow Congress to resolve outstanding issues related to the project, and the Urban Design Section recommends approval of the... the project, and the Urban Design Section recommends approval of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. And I'd also note that the letter also indicates that the applicant is waiving their 70-day action period. Okay. Mr. Lynch?
Yes, Madam Chair, Dan Lynch, on behalf of Cruise Developments, here requesting continuance till September 24th on this item. As Mr. Bishop indicated, there are a couple unresolved issues, which we happily believe we have addressed, but they weren't addressed in time for this hearing. So we're just requesting a continuance and look for the board's support for this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so is there a motion? Madam Vice, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of September 24th. Commissioner Washington?
Commissioner Geraldo, second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
The ayes have it, 4-0. We have another.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have another request for a continuance on Item 8, which is the specific design plan, 1802, Brandywine Village Commercial. Again, let me make sure we have everyone. Mr. Bossi? Okay. Mr. Horn?
Present, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Jamila Balamani?
Present.
Okay, thank you. Tashara Burgess?
Present.
Okay. Angela Simmons?
Present.
Valerie Davis? Okay, somebody's having a conversation, so we need for you to stop having your conversation. Okay. Valerie Davis, did you say, did I hear, present? Valerie Davis? Jennifer Jackson? So I think, Mr. Bishop, Jennifer Jackson, you're present?
I'm present, yes.
Okay, what about Valerie Davis? Okay. Okay, so I know, Mr. Bossi, I think you all reached out to everyone about this. Mr. Horn, or Mr. Bossi, you want to go forward, or do you need the attorney to go forward?
Madam Chairman, this is Adam Bossi from the Urban Design Section. Just for the record here, and as you mentioned, this is Item 8, the specific design plan for SDP 1802 for Brandywine Village Commercial, and the applicant has submitted a letter dated July 17th to continue this hearing again to next week's agenda on July 30th. As with the previous continuance requests, the applicant is awaiting the district council's issuance of a final order on the underlying CDP. And as with previous continuance requests, staff is supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Horn?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Arthur Horn, office of Shipyard Horn in Largo, Maryland. And as Mr. Bossi indicated, we were always hopeful of the district council returning and finalizing the CDP. We had information and belief that they were meeting this upcoming week. As it turns out, they are meeting on Monday, which should allow us to be able to go forward with this case next Thursday. So we just ask for this one-week continuance on this case.
Okay. And I asked, okay, so let me double-check with the other speakers. So, keeping hope alive here. Okay, so Jamila Balamani? Are you, I know you're present.
Yeah, I'm here.
So you're okay with the one week?
I'm in agreement.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess?
Yes, I'm in agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Ms. Simmons?
Yes, I'm in agreement.
Thank you. I'm checking again on Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis? Okay, so we'll go on to Ms. Jackson.
Yes, I'm in agreement.
Thank you so much. That concludes the signup list. Is there a motion?
Move, Madam Chair, for one-week continuance to July 30th. Commissioner Washington? Second, Commissioner Bailey?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. I doubt that there's any discussion. Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
The ayes have it, 4-0. Next item on our agenda is Item 10, which is a draft resolution to be approved for Final Plan 5-20030 Town Square at Sootland Federal Center. I just want to make sure we have everyone. Antoine, okay, let me say this. Somebody is having a conversation, and everyone can hear your conversation, so in the event you think you're speaking privately, you are not. Okay? So I'm asking everyone to be mindful of their conversations. Antoine Heath?
Good morning, Madam Chair. This is Sherri Connor on behalf of Antoine Heath.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Connor. Mr. Rivera, we see you.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, Ms. Connor, I don't think we need, unless you have any comments, I'm going straight for the motion.
I do not have any comments.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Oh, Mr. Rivera, you had nothing to add, right?
Yes, ma'am, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chair. Commissioner Washington?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I vote aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, 4-0. Okay, we're going to proceed. Thank you. In this order now. The next, our cases that we're actually going to hear, we're going to commence with Item 9, which is mandatory referral for Cherokee Lane Elementary School, then Item 6, which is the conceptual site plan for Marlboro Gateway, then Item 5, Amazon.com Services, and then Item 3A. All right, so next is Item 9. So Ivy Thompson? Ivy Thompson, are you present? Ivy Thompson? I see your name there. Ms. Thompson? Bobby Ray?
Present, Madam Chair.
Bobby Ray, can you do this? Are you?
Yeah, I can do this.
Okay. All right, thank you. Shawn Matlock? Shawn Matlock from Prince George's County Public Schools?
He's speaking, Madam Chair, but he cannot be heard. I think Ms. Thompson's having the same problem.
Okay. So everybody has been unmuted from our end, right? Everybody's unmuted from our end, so you have, some of you have to unmute yourselves. I see.
They are unmuted, Madam Chair. The sound is not coming across, very similar to the issue you had this morning.
So our issue, I think, was here. We have unmuted them. Well, all righty then. Okay. All righty then. Okay. So let me do this. How about Scott Adams? Are you here?
I'm here.
Okay, good. Jason Fritz? Okay, so Mr. Matlock, Shawn Matlock? Ms. Matlock. Shawn Matlock, when you're on, can you let us know? I'm going.
He's on, Madam Chair, and speaking, but we just can't be heard.
Okay. So I, I don't.
This is Hannah Keller. Ivy is on, she's not muted, but obviously there might be some other technical thing going on.
That's fine. Okay, so we're going to go, Bobby Ray is ready to go forward on that, so, or whoever else you want to go forward. And then, let me, I'm going to ask Bobby Ray to find out if Mr. Matlock is in agreement with the mandatory referral comments, and maybe Scott Adams can address it as well. So I'm going to have Bobby, can they hear? Do we know if they can hear, even though they can't speak?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
This is Bobby.
Okay. All right, Mr. Ray, can you go forward, please?
Absolutely. Madam Chair, members of the planning board, the proposal was reviewed per Law Use Article Section 20-301 through 305 of the Maryland Annotated Code for Mandatory Referrals. The project involves new construction of an approximately 95,800-square-foot elementary school with requisite parking, play areas, and a multipurpose field adjacent to the Buck Lodge Middle School. Next slide. The project is in Council District 1. Next slide. The 24.44-acre site is owned by the Prince George's County Board of Education. The existing school, which is outlined in purple on this slide, is located south of the proposed project site. Next slide. The zoning is rural residential and is bounded by Buck Lodge Road on the northwest, single-family residential dwellings in the R-80 and R-55 to the west and southwest, the Buck Lodge Community Park zone, residential open space to the northeast and east, and property owned by the State of Maryland to the south and southwest. Next slide. And you'll see, based on this slide, there is no overlay zone associated with the site. Next slide. There are no significant environmental features on the site. There is an approved natural resources inventory that is currently under review. Next slide. The site is east of Riggs Road, Maryland 212, and is accessed directly from Buck Lodge Road. Next slide. The aerial view shows the existing Buck Lodge Middle School and the vacant undeveloped portion of the parcel where the proposed elementary school will co-locate. Prince George's County Public School Educational Facilities Master Plan identified the original school as a Cycle 1 facility requiring comprehensive modernization or replacement. The existing school building will remain for use as a swing location for other schools being renovated or constructed in the district. Next slide. The site plan shows the orientation of the building, parking, and proposed play areas. The new two-story, 95,800-square-foot school building is designed to a state-rated capacity of 790 students to serve new and current students from the existing Cherokee Lane Elementary School facility. The inclusion of self-contained education programs increases the state-rated capacity of the new school to 846 students. The three-phase project includes the, includes the building, pedestrian access, vehicular access, 181 new parking spaces, enclosed play areas, and a multipurpose field, landscaping and environmental site design, stormwater management east of the multipurpose field. To lessen construction traffic impacts on the adjoining residential neighborhood, much of the building has been constructed off-site. PGCTS will implement the traffic management procedures when the new building becomes operational. And I have to apologize. We do have a video showing the, kind of going around the school. Unfortunately, I'm not quite sure how to, to make that happen where I'm sitting right now.
We're doing it now.
Okay.
It's just a little bit slow. Yeah, I will tell you this. Let me tell you, in this extraordinary heat wave here, it's having an effect on pretty much everything. There are power outages everywhere, and there are other issues, and I can't.
So the video starts north of the building at the entrance and the bus loop. It will rotate east to the second access point for parent drop-off and faculty parking on the north and east sides of the building. The flat-roofed building is sited near the street in line with the existing middle school, and visible on the video are two enclosed play areas and a multipurpose field. There's a pedestrian path also shown on the site. Staff is recommending a more prominent pedestrian connection between the existing Buck Lodge Middle School and the proposed elementary school. If you could let me know when the video concludes, and we could move on to the next slide.
It's, it's working its way down. I've been watching it.
Actually, let me go ahead and move on to the recommendations. There's no point waiting. We have nine recommendations that include the provision for bike racks, landscaping islands, and shade trees for the parking areas, extension of the existing sidewalks along Buck Lodge Road frontage, the addition of a southbound left turn lane at Buck Lodge Terrace, and coordination with parks on the adjacent commission-owned property. The application has been reviewed for performance to the planning board's adopted uniform standards for mandatory referral review, as set forth in the technical staff report, and we recommend that the planning board adopt the staff comments and transmit those to the applicant. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ray. Let's see if the board has any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
What questions?
Commissioner Geraldo?
Just one question. How many bike racks are being recommended?
This is Jason Fritz.
Okay, Mr. Fritz, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so there are 18 bike racks proposed at the main entrance to the school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. Was that it for your questions, Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes, it was, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, Mr. Fritz, did you have anything else to add?
I don't know if Shawn was able to get on.
I'm going to, yes, Mr. Matlock?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
So I think the only, only issue that we wanted to, that I, you know, we've got responses to all these, most of them, you know, we're going to try and accept as much as we can. On number five, about the road change, we have a future connection to Metzgerott Road. It's currently in the planning stages, which ultimately will alleviate the traffic concerns in the community, the traffic for the Buck Lodge Middle School, and the relocated Cherokee Lane Elementary School. So funding is currently set aside, and land acquisition with the State of Maryland and the University of Maryland are currently underway. So once these items are in order, we're in the design of, we can construct a road that will run behind both those schools, so that we don't have to make the change to the road on, at 212 and Buck Lodge Terrace. So that was one of the, our only real concerns. The other ones, we're all, we're working to address, and have got, everything else we pretty much are okay with. We're making accommodations.
Okay. Thank you. So does the board have any questions of Mr. Matlock? Let me take a look at the commissioners. Okay. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. So given the presentation by Mr. Matlock, Mr. Adams, do you have anything else to add?
He's muted.
Scott Adams?
I have no comments. I have nothing to add.
Thank you. So is there, is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Remove that, support the recommendations, development of the Cherokee Lane Elementary Remove that, uh, support the recommendations, uh, development of the Cherokee Lane Elementary School with the following recommendations as outlined on page 10 and 11.
Okay.
My second, I'm so sorry, I was muted, um, and would just ask, uh, the motion maker to, to ensure that Mr. Matlock's comments with regards to the road improvements, uh, be incorporated into the record related to condition, recommendation number five.
Absolutely.
Thank you, and then we'll transmit, um, the letter, okay. Um, with that motion and, um, the second by Commissioner Washington, um, Madam Vice Chair?
Both I.
Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Both I.
The I's have it for zero. Okay, ne, thank you, everyone. Um, the next, the next item on our agenda is item six, um, conceptual site plan 19001, Marlboro Gateway, and I'm going to do a check to make sure we have the requisite participants. Henry Zhang, are you on?
Yes, ma'am, present.
Thank you. Jill Kosak?
Present.
Um, Matt Tedesco?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm present.
Thank you. Um, Chuck Schneider?
Present.
Glenn Burton?
Present.
Ben Ryan?
Present.
Paul Sun? Paul Sun? Okay, I'm gonna keep moving. Um, Howard Berger?
Present.
Jennifer Stabler?
Present.
Okay. Alex Villegas?
Present.
Kevin Stetser?
Present.
Ryan Day?
Present.
Nat Ballard?
Present.
Michael Lenhart?
Present.
Lauren Lynn?
Present.
Um, Tiaan Blygen?
Present.
Did I pronounce it correctly?
Blygen, thank you.
Blygen, okay, thank you.
But you had the T name correct, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you, okay. Okay. Um, okay, I think that completes our list. Um, um, so with that, Mr. Zhang, you're on?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the planning board. For the record, this is Henry Zhang from the Urban Design Section. Uh, item six in front of you is a conceptual site plan 19001, uh, Marlboro Gateway, which is a proposal for 100 to 265 multifamily dwellings, uh, 1,200 to 75,000, 12 feet of commercial retail spaces, and 5,000 to 30,000, 12 feet of office grid. Uh, slide number two, please. Uh, the subject property, uh, measured almost 21 acres, is located in Plenary Area 79, Council District 6. Vice Ray, please. Uh, specifically, the site is located on the north side of Marlboro Pike, MD 725, uh, located in the northwest quadrant of its intersection of US 301. It's outside the boundary of the town of Marlboro. Uh, slide four, please. The site is zone MXT, mixed-use transportation-oriented zone by the 2013 approved Subregion 6 Master Plan and Section of Math Amendment. The site is surrounded on all three sides, or two sides, north and west by the MXT zone, and then across the street of Marlboro Pike, uh, are existing uses in the I-1 zone. Uh, slide number five, please. Uh, this is the aerial photo shows the site, uh, outlined in red, which is predominantly wooded with five existing single-family houses. Uh, slide, uh, number six, please. Uh, this is a site map, shows that the site, uh, there are regulated environmental features such as 100 years floor plan, stream, and steep slopes on the side. Next slide, please. Uh, slide number seven is a master plan roadway, shows the, uh, Marlboro Pike is a primary street, and the US 1 is a arterial street. Uh, next slide, please. Slide eight is a first eye view of the site, which, uh, outlined in red, uh, you will see predominantly wooded. Uh, next slide, please, numbers, slide number nine, which is a conceptual site plan of this, of this proposal. Uh, this site basically, uh, has frontage on MD 725, which is Marlboro Pike, excuse me, as well as US 301. Uh, there are two, uh, building envelopes proposed, uh, for this conceptual site plan. The larger one, uh, has, uh, frontage on MD 725, and then US 301, which propose for a mixed-use of multifamily and possibly commercial slash retail, and also office uses. And, uh, the smaller, uh, envelope on the, uh, your left-hand lower corner is proposed for commercial, uh, retail use only. And then that has a direct access from the MD 725. Uh, the proposal basically concentrated development in the, uh, in the corner around 301 and the MD 725, because there are a lot of environmental features to be aware at the north and west of the site. Uh, this proposal, uh, proposed two phases, uh, will be, uh, developed for this site. The first phase is the larger envelope, uh, consists of the mixed-use development, and the second phase will be, uh, the part here for commercial, uh, retail use. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is slide 10, uh, which is conceptual, uh, illustrative plan, which shows three larger buildings in the larger envelope, and the corner of the US 301 and the MD 725. And then, at the red, at the corner of the, of the two intersect, I mean, the two roadway, there are existing gas station and Dunkin' Donuts store. And then, uh, you will see the site will be accessed directly from MD 725, uh, for the larger envelope, and then smaller, for the smaller envelope here, also accessed directly, uh, from 725. Uh, as the purpose of illustrative plan show is just, uh, the general layout of possible development of the site, and the, the final development, uh, uh, site plan will be reviewed and approved through, uh, subsequent two-stage of review, which is preliminary plan of subdivision and detailed site plan. Next slide, please. Uh, slide 11 is circulation and facing plan, uh, which I mentioned previously, uh, once again, on possibly three access points to this site, and then two phases will be, uh, developed for the whole project. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, slide 12 is the Type 1 Trade Conservation Plan, which shows, uh, environmental features, regulated environmental features to the north and west of the proposed building envelope. Uh, next slide, please, which is the last slide, uh, 13, uh, which shows the possible quality of the proposed multifamily, commercial building, and, uh, as well as the street furnitures, including sitting, uh, furnitures, uh, lighting fixtures, et cetera. Um, no agencies oppose the approval of this, uh, conceptual site plan. Uh, this CSP meet all applicable zoning regulations for approval, uh, which has a discussion on page 5 to 16 on the staff report. This CSP also meet, uh, woodland and wildlife habitat conservation ordinance. Uh, the urban design section recommend that planning board approve CSP 19001, include TCB 1 dash oh, excuse me, dash zero 11 dash 2020 for Marlboro Gateway, uh, subject to five conditions on page 22 to 25 of the staff report. Uh, the applicant, uh, has, uh, Exhibit A submitted on time, which proposed three revisions to the condition, which has been, uh, discussed with the staff, and we are in full agreement with the proposal. Uh, there are citizens, several citizens sign up, uh, to oppose this development, and then they will be, uh, talking, uh, about their concerns later on. With that, the staff will conclude this, uh, presentation. Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Zhang. Mr. Zhang, I just want to verify one thing. Um, I know this property was placed, um, in the MXT zone by the Prince George's District Council, the county council setting this district council, correct?
That's correct.
I think it was 2013, and therefore, um, and these are, in fact, the uses proposed are permitted uses in the MXT zone, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Which is, they need all the requirement for the use.
Yes, yes, okay. Um, and, and the MXT zone mandates two, it's, it's a 24-hour environment, and it mandates two of the following use categories, re, two of the following three, a use categories, retail business, or number two, office and research, or dwelling units and hotels, hotel motel, is that correct?
That's correct. Actually, they proposed the three required uses on this property.
Right. But I'm saying the MXT requires, okay, requires at least two of those, okay. All right, that's, that's really what I wanted to double-check. Okay, let me see if there are any other questions of you at, at this time. Madam Vice Chair?
Well, the only question I have, we've had this before, where there is, uh, historical significance in some form or fashion. At what point is that, uh, information requested?
Uh, I, I'm not following you, please repeat that, to...
Okay, if we look at the, uh, information from the Historic Preservation Section, I'm wondering, and there's some requests, uh, on that information, when do we receive that information? Is it part, something that comes at a much later date, or at what phase of the development do we get that information?
Mr. Zhang, I'm looking at, 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 not only in the staff report, but I'm looking at the attached, um, letter dated, um, June 3, 2020, from, um, Jennifer Stabler and, um, via Howard Berger, regarded, that, that details, um, historic, um, nature there, and the African-American families who had formerly been enslaved in those nearby plantations.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, this is Jennifer Stabler with the Historic Preservation Section. Uh, normally that, uh, the archaeological survey, and I believe the archaeological survey has already been completed on the property, although we don't have the draft report yet, that's usually, uh, required at the time of subdivision. So we're expecting to get a lot of that information at the time of subdivision, and that will allow us to, uh, to request some, um, additional, uh, I guess, um, oh...
Information, yeah, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to, at, at what phase do we get that information? I saw that it was requested, yeah, okay, thank you.
So, which, which is kind of a, a really important point, because, um, to, to highlight that a conceptual site plan is just that conceptual in nature, therefore, um, not only is that issue, will that issue be delved into, um, um, after we get some more information, but also things like transportation and whatnot will come before us at a preliminary plan of subdivision. That's where we will have a more detailed transportation analysis. So, um, so sometimes, um, folks may not know the various stages of development, and so I'm, I'm putting that out there for, um, folks who may not know about the transportation that will come, be addressed at preliminary plan. Okay, or, um...
That's correct.
So, um, let me see, um, Madam Vice Chair, was that it for your questions?
That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No, I had no questions, uh, I was following up. Commissioner Bailey asked the questions that I had, so that's fine, I'm good.
Thank you so much. Okay, so with that, um, Mr. Tedesco?
Good morning, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, um, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board commission. For the record, Matthew Tedesco, the law firm of Mac Mahoney, here on behalf of the owner applicant, which is Green Century Partners LLC. Uh, with me this morning, just to reintroduce them, I know they went through the roll call. On behalf of the ownership, we have Mr. Ryan Day and Kevin Stetser. On behalf of Rogers Consulting, Mr. Alex Villegas and Nat Ballard, also Charlie Howell is part of the team, and Mike Lenhart with Lenhart Trafficking Consulting. Well, I want to thank, um, the chair for, uh, and, and the members of the board for some of their comments in reference to the, to the process that we are in currently. Also want to thank Mr. Zhang for his presentation and his staff report. Um, as the chair indicated, this is a conceptual site plan. It is the first of a three-step process required by the MXT zoning. Um, we are at the conceptual site plan phase, we still have yet to, um, move forward with the preliminary plan of subdivision, which becomes a little bit more focused, and then ultimately the detailed site plan, which is obviously needed for building permit. So, we are on the first step of a three-step process with this application. Uh, that being said, um, I also want to highlight another comment that was made. This property, as well as all the surrounding property, um, to the north, all the way up, honestly, to where the Broadwater property is, um, was all comprehensively rezoned to MXT, uh, including the Peerless property, the Broadwater property, and this property, and then properties to the, to the west, was all comprehensively rezoned in 2016 as part of the Subregion 6 Master Plan. Um, the, the reason for the rezoning was to create new opportunities for development in this area. That's a quote from page 221 of the master plan. Uh, the area was further described as strategically located north of the intersection of US 301 and Maryland 4, and offers a unique opportunity for new development and redevelopment, and in improving upon the gateway, uh, of Maryland 725 and the 725 quarter leading into the town and the county seat of Prince George's County. And that's at pages 194 and 195 of the sector plan. Your staff report also highlights the master plan, um, recommendations with respect to the zoning, um, at page, and your indulgence, at page 11. Now, I will note that master plan performance is not a required finding for conceptual site plan, but it does frame the, the reasons and the purposes for why this property, as well as the surrounding properties, was rezoned to MXT. You have before you a conceptual site plan that proposes about a 1, 1.13 or 1.14, uh, FAR, excuse me, a 1.3 to 1.4 FAR on the highest end. Uh, the board knows, and is referenced in the staff report, um, Section 27547, which is the table of uses in the MXT zone, footnote 7 in particular. Um, the zoning ordinance requires that the maximum number and the type of dwelling units be determined at the time of conceptual site plan.
Mr. Tedesco, Mr. Tedesco, I, we, we do have some lay citizens on the phone, can you just, uh, define FAR, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, floor area ratio.
Thank you.
The, uh, the floor area ratio allowed in the MXT zone, the, the base is 0.4 floor area ratio. Um, the MXT, the zoning ordinance provides that if there are 20 or more residential units proposed, you get a, uh, an increment bump of 1.0 FAR, which allows up to 1.4. We have demonstrated a 1.4 FAR for this conceptual site plan primarily for the reason that footnote 7 requires, uh, and the zoning which requires the maximum number of dwelling units to be determined at this point. So we can't go any higher than what we proposed here, we can only go lower. Um, and we will, we will further fine-tune that, uh, with subsequent applications when we get to the preliminary plan and when we get to the detailed site plan. So with that, Madam Chair, um, I just wanted to, uh, again, thank staff, in particular, environmental planning staff, uh, Ms. Reiser, Mr. Snyder, as well as your transportation planning staff, Mr. Barnett Woods, and Mr. Ryan, as well as Mr. Burton. We have worked very, very closely with them on a number of the, uh, initial reviews of this application, as you, I think most people are familiar with this property. You know, it sits at the intersection of Maryland 725 as well as 301. Obviously, we know some of the, the constraints and issues with 301, so transportation was obviously something we focused on, as well as, uh, the environmental features, for which there are some significant environmental features primarily to the north and east of the property. So, I'd like to thank environmental planning and trans... So, I'd like to thank environmental planning and transportation planning staff for their review of this case, and obviously urban designers, Mr. Zhang and Ms. Kozak, for working with us through this application. With that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to stop talking. We would submit on the staff, on our justification statement, and we, you know, I would cite you, as Mr. Zhang, get to pages 6 through 16 of your staff report, which go through all the required regulations and findings for the support of the recommendation of approval for this case. I did submit an Exhibit A, which is in your backup, with some minor revisions to conditions, which we have confirmed with staff, that they are in agreement with, and I would be happy to go through those or table that until the citizens speak and then come back, whichever the board prefers.
Okay. So let me do this, first of all, we're accepting your proposed, for purposes of identification, it's already in the record in time, but we're going to identify, label your exhibit, your proposed revised conditions as applicant's exhibit number one. Did you say A or one?
I said A. I go back and forth between letters and numbers, and the last few have been letters, so I'm just going with that.
Okay, we'll call it A, okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, I had labeled it differently. Okay, and also, I want to take a moment to say that we have two letters in opposition here. We have one from Rhonda Joseph in opposition about, against the housing, but I will say that the MXT requires a mixture, it requires a 24-hour environment. So housing and offices, or hotels and motels, things like that, some combination. And there was a reference to Governor Hogan's brother, but, you know, that, there's no conflict of interest there. No one there is making, no one in the state is making a decision on this matter, it's just the planning board will make a decision based on the law. We also have a letter from Lauren Lynn, who, she, so we're, both of these letters are in the record as opponent's exhibit number one. One was, the first one being the email from Rhonda Joseph, and the second one would be the letter from Ms. Lynn, but who is here to testify next, actually, and she can address her letter. So, let's see if the board has any questions of you at this time, and then we can come back and do your revised conditions, proposed revised conditions. Madam Vice Chair, any questions of Mr. Tedesco?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Lauren Lynn?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Planning Board members. My name is Lauren Lynn. I am a lifelong Marylander and was born and raised in Upper Marlboro and attended the local public schools. After graduate school, I relocated to Southern Maryland to be closer to work, but nearly every weekend I found myself coming back to Upper Marlboro and Bowie for their amenities. After living in Southern Maryland for several years, I decided to sell my home and move back to the Upper Marlboro area. In September of 2019, I purchased a home in Beechtree because of its great location and natural beauty. Although the property taxes in Prince George's County are significantly higher than those other Maryland counties, I knew that Upper Marlboro was where I wanted to be. When I recently found out about the proposed peerless developments and Marlboro Gateway, I was very concerned. Route 301 gets a lot of traffic and often has traffic congestion during the afternoon rush hour. With the new development, Locust Hill, the Amazon Warehouse, and now the Marlboro Gateway, traveling on Route 301 will be a nightmare. Does the county plan to enhance the infrastructure to accommodate all of this new construction? It is my fear that Upper Marlboro and Bowie, the Upper Marlboro and Bowie portion of 301 will look like the extremely congested Brandywine Waldorf section of 301. A home purchase is generally the biggest purchase of a person's life. It is a major investment and is often considered the American dream. As an Upper Marlboro resident, I worry that the value of my home will decrease if low-income apartments are constructed half a mile away. One of the benefits of homeownership is having your property value increase over time. If and when I decide to sell my home, I do not want the value to be decreased because of low-income housing in such close proximity to $500,000 to $1 million homes. The conceptual site plan for Marlboro Gateway also proposes a retail space. I am concerned that the retail space will consist of yet another discount dollar store, beauty supply, nail salon, or other low-end stores, which seem to be prevalent in the area. We do not need that type of retail in our community, as there is enough right off of 301 between Marlton and Bowie. I know that the county recently received a property tax waiver from the state of Maryland to help with the funding of the construction of the Peerless Marlboro Gateway project, but I oppose this project in its entirety, and hopefully you will be hearing from other voting residents in the Upper Marlboro area in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn, we appreciate it. Are there any questions, Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, thank you for appearing though.
Thank you. Some of your comments we will address too, and we'll also have transportation people address some of your issues regarding the Route 301 traffic. I will tell you this, and when a zone permits, such as MXT zone, but when it permits retail, we cannot then determine, okay, this type of retail is okay, but this type of retail is not okay. The use itself is a permitted use in the MXT zone. So, we can't just bifurcate that use and say, okay, some categories within that use are permitted and some are not. I will turn to, let's, let me go to the next speaker, and then we're going to have, perhaps, you can have Mr. Lenhart, Mr. Tedesco address some things, and Mr. Burton as well, or Ben Ryan. Okay. Cheyenne Blajin, did I get it right this time?
Yes, thank you, Miss Madam Chair.
Okay.
Actually, I would first want to thank Madam Chair and the members of the Planning Board for hearing me today. I really came seeking information. I have a couple of questions and concerns. I am neither pro or against this plan. I just want to know, for the justification, the what and the why, not necessarily, or I mean, I guess, the how and the why, not necessarily the what. I know they want to build homes, they want to put in offices and retail, but how are we going to service our community? You know, we need to respect the land, we respect the investors, you know, the property owners in the area, and we need to respect our community, and we need to know what that is. I mean, we have houses that are being built less than, or we have a retail community that's built less than five miles south of us, that is not full. We have housing and retail community 10 miles north of us, that is not full. We have three more housing developments in less than 10 miles radius from here that are constantly being built. My question is, what is the need for additional housing? What is the need for the retail that we do not have here? And we would like, at least for me as an investor in the neighborhood, and I think the rest of the community, like to know why we're building this, and how you're going to enrich our livelihood and our property.
So, Ms...
What's the purpose?
Ms. Blajin, so we have, let me respond to some of that, and we'll have the applicant respond as well. And some of this may apply to Ms. Lynn. Again, when, it seems like Ms. Lynn moved into the prop, into Beechtree in 2019, when the property was already zoned MXT. So, as I said, the council has already determined what uses are permissible in this area. So when housing is permissible, or retail is permissible, and all of these things are permissible, if an application comes in that is consistent with the uses that have already been determined legal by the body, by the district council, then we cannot comment on the use, and we cannot summarily discount or disapprove the proposed use, because the courts deem that arbitrary and compresions. Property owners have a right to develop their property, that's fundamental constitutional law. So, however, that doesn't mean that they have carte blanche. When they submit an application that has a use that has been determined legal, they still have to meet other criteria. There has to be an analysis, there has to be a traffic analysis, and things of that nature. There has to be, we look at things like architecture and those types of things. What Mr. Tedesco has indicated, that this is the first phase, the conceptual phase, and then there will be a preliminary plan stage, which is more detailed, and we'll talk about layout, and then there will be the detailed site plan stage. And what I wanted to ask you, because we really appreciate the two of you signing up, but I wanted to ask you, is do you have a copy of the staff report? Did you get that online?
I did, and I read through it.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure that people do that perfectly. I just want to make sure that people...
I did, all the documentation available on this, I read. And that's why I said, I'm not either for or against, and I appreciate you explaining the level we're at. And to me, this is that justification part. Like I said, I'm not for or against. I'm okay with it being there, but it seems in our area, we have been flooded with development. And I'm all for development, it brings jobs, it brings all sorts of opportunities here, but we have empty homes, we have empty real estate places, and there was a time in this area where it was too much, and I actually really appreciate it, with Governor Hogan.
Uh-oh.
Let's make this actually serve our community.
Okay. So, Ms. Blajin, yeah?
It's the purpose of my neighborhood, there's stories I'd like to see. Absolutely, bring them, don't just throw up anything.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was not trying to stop you, you, your remarks were being delayed a little bit. That's all, that's all, I was trying to keep up. I hope you can hear me now. Can anyone tell?
She's paused, I mean, she's frozen.
I know, but I'm...
It's on her side.
It's on her side, okay. So she's a little frozen there, and I also, Mr. Tedesco? Oh, they said they couldn't hear me.
Here's our computer, it's been up a little bit. If we could break, and we'll restart the computer.
Can we put the sign up, because I'm not sure they can even hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we, we can't?
Nobody can hear you.
Well, you might be frozen up on our end, so...
Okay, can we, can you put a sign up, say we have to take a break for technical?
Yeah, I'll see if I don't mind.
Can anyone hear me?
I can now.
Okay, so we're having a little issue on this side, and we're going to break for just a minute to try and fix things.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty, thank you, Roger.
A little bit crazy here, but we're going to proceed on undeterred, and we, I think we had a number of questions that we tried to answer for Ms. Lynn, but also wanted to make sure that, Mr. Tedesco, can you address some of the issues that were raised with regard to the traffic on 301?
Will she finish?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm happy to do that. Also, I would like to take an opportunity to respond to Ms. Blajin's comments.
Yes, now.
Primarily with respect to her questions about, you know, the why, why this development. And so if I could just go in that order, from Ms. Blajin's comments, back to Ms. Lynn's comments. Primarily, I'm going to refer to and cite back to not only what's been said repeatedly, but the zoning of this property was purposefully done by the county council sitting as the district council in 2013 to provide a mix of uses, not just for this single property, but for that entire area, all the way, as I mentioned before, if you turn to slide six, I believe it is, you'll see the zoning in the area. Your indulgence, Madam Chair, it's slide four, excuse me, if you turn to slide four, you can see the zoning in the area, the MX, everything that was zoned MXT was quite comprehensive, it was not just this property, but the properties surrounding it.
That's all the purple, all the purple.
It's all the purple, yes, ma'am, it's all the purple. The properties to the south is industrially zoned I-1, which is light industrial, the properties across 301 are in the commercial miscellaneous, which are auto-dependent type uses. And so the notion, and that's why I took the time to go through and read some excerpts from this master plan, which, again, although master plan compliance is not a required finding for a conceptual site plan, it's more so for a preliminary plan, which is a later phase of development. This development is purposefully in keeping with those recommendations of the master plan for the MXT zone. All the uses that are proposed will become more in the focus with subsequent plans. We don't have tenants for the retail, we understand and appreciate the comments with respect to the type of retail that Ms. Lynn made, we will certainly keep those in mind, but we don't have any tenants currently, given the fact that this is just the conceptual site plan. Unfortunately, I did not have the opportunity to speak to either Ms. Lynn or Ms. Blajin prior to today, I wasn't aware, but hopefully we can exchange information, or we're happy to continue the dialogue past today, as we get further down the road with other development entitlements. But the other point I want to highlight is not only the zoning and the master plan recommendations, but also in 2018, September 2018, the county spent an extensive time going through a comprehensive housing strategy. And although that's not before you, because I didn't include it, I think you could take notice of it, I think we're all familiar with it, but that's almost a 200-page housing strategy document that was prepared by the county. I'm not going to go through it in a whole lot of detail, but I do want to highlight a couple of things. On pages six, on seven, page seven, there's the summary of targeted strategy number one, which is to encourage new context-sensitive development that expands upon housing types to serve the county's diverse population and distinct geographic character. This strategy rightsizes housing investments to meet the needs of Prince George's diverse population made up of seniors, families, and households of different races and ethnicities. It recognizes that a wider range of housing opportunities could be used to attract new residents along with new employers or other businesses, business opportunities to the county. It also accounts for the unique urban, suburban, and rural character of Prince George's County by ensuring that new housing opportunities complement the area in which they are built. Under that strategy, there are eight action items. I'm not going to review, I'm not going to go through all eight, but I'm going to highlight three of the eight. Action item 1.1 is to support proposed zoning changes, changes that expand and encourage missing middle and other diverse housing types. Action 1.3, build more mixed-use and mixed-income developments. Action 1.8, explore innovative, low-cost housing solutions to serve persons experiencing homelessness. So, although the Peerless Project was referenced, this is not the Peerless, the Towns of Peerless Project, but the Towns of Peerless Project is in the MXT zone, it is north of us, it does serve those strategies, as well as this project, we believe, serves those strategies as well pursuant to the comprehensive housing strategy plan. So that's kind of the why. As far as the traffic concerns, as I've said many times on many projects along the 301 corridor from Southern County line all the way up through Bowie, we certainly recognize that 301 is a heavily traveled highway, it is a commuter route through Prince George's County from Southern Maryland. We recognize that, the county recognizes that, and it's precisely why the county and the budget that they adopted a month and a half ago included funding for a CIP project for the 301 corridor, which is referenced in your staff report. Mike Lenhart's on the line, I know Mr. Burton is in attendance. I'm not the traffic experts, I'll defer to them, but I will say, at pages, at page 14 of your staff report, Mr. Burton... I'll defer to them, but I will say at page 14 of your staff report, Mr. Burton analyzed the traffic impact analysis that Mr. Lenhart had conducted, taking into account the CIP, which is capital improvement project, and the funding that was placed in the budget for the 301 CIP project. The intersections, the studied intersection, which was Maryland 725 and US 301, and the AM would operate at a level service A, and then the PM a level service B. Now, as we go through the preliminary plan subdivision, we will certainly be retested for transportation adequacy based upon what is proposed at that time, which may or may not be as dense as what's contemplated in the CSP. But nevertheless, even setting the ceiling with this conceptual site plan as required by footnote seven, and taking into consideration the capital improvement programs and the developer contribution funding towards those transportation improvement projects, the intersections will operate at acceptable levels of service. So, I think that addresses the comments, but I'm happy to answer any further questions.
So, let me do, thank you, Mr. Tedesco. Let me do this. First of all, as you mentioned, there's some analysis in the staff report. And then, of course, we also have, I'm looking in our backup, we have the memo from Mr. Burton through Tom Masak to Mr. Zhang dated June 22, 2020, that goes through a more detailed analysis as well. We will address this more at a preliminary plan stage. And as someone, I know there are problems there. We've been discussing the problems on Route 301 for a very, very long time. And as one who lives in Bowie and has to travel, because I work in Upper Marlboro, I'm here in Upper Marlboro now, we recognize the issues there, but we also have to balance those with your applicant's fundamental property rights as well. But we do have to make sure that we have the requisite transportation improvements, which will be discussed in greater detail at a preliminary plan stage. If Mr. Lenhart, you can turn to Mr. Lenhart if you have something else to add.
Only if needed, Madam Chair. I won't.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I mean, I can, Mr. Lenhart, would you have anything to add in addition to my comments?
Totally, if there's additional questions. I think Matt did a good job of kind of discussing the overview. This will be tested again at time of preliminary plan. There will be a new study, and our pro-rata share of the CIP project will be identified at that time and conditioned upon approval. So, we will be paying our pro-rata share into the CIP payment prior to any construction.
Thank you. Mr. Tedesco, you indicated that you had not had the opportunity to speak with Ms. Lynn or Ms. Blajin before being unaware of their interests. I know the signs are posted with who to call. I do want, I would like for you to, you all, you or your applicant, to provide information to them so that they know how to continue this conversation with you, so that they are better prepared and have a greater, you know, interaction and understanding prior to the preliminary plan stage, if in fact this gets approved today.
Yes, ma'am. What I'll do is I'll reach out to Mr. Hunt and Mr. Zhang. I believe in all of us, when we sign up for these hearings, we have to provide email addresses.
Yes, we do.
I don't want them to provide their email addresses over the internet-
Correct.
-through the hearing. So, I know some people think those are personal. So, I'll reach out to them and get their email addresses privately, and then send them an email later this morning so that they have all my contact information.
Wonderful. Okay, that would be great. And I know they're very appreciative of that. Thank you. Mr. Tedesco, can you go forward with your proposed revisions to conditions in applicant's Exhibit A?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. So, I believe you had that before you.
We do.
Revisions to condition 1D as in David and E as in Edward. We basically combined 1D and E into one new condition D to address the transportation, primarily the trails, transportation requests, and provided language that is responsive to the applicant's request as well as staff's request for that improvement to be shown conceptually on the conceptual site plan with arrows. So, that's what that language does in new 1D. Condition 2D, we're showing deleted. That was the subject of communication and further analysis and study by Rogers Consulting as well as your environmental planning section regarding the stream. And it was determined that the additional information rendered that condition moot, so we are proposing that to be deleted.
Okay.
And then, condition 3B is in reference to activation along Maryland 725, staff's desire to see whether it be the mixed abuses or other public-oriented functions at street level, for that to be considered at the time of detailed site plan to activate Maryland 725 frontage.
Okay.
And although I did, I just want to mention, just so it's clear, although I did not include revisions to findings, per se, with these conditions, I would just note for the record that as much as any findings need to be massaged a little bit to correspond with the requested changes to conditions, we would ask that be done at the time of resolution.
Okay, and so, we will have our, so if the board supports your proposed revisions to conditions, then we would ask for internally for the corresponding findings to be changed before the resolution comes back to us. And we would do that, and you would have the opportunity to look at it as well.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that.
Absolutely, yeah. Madam Chair, staff will correct it, I mean, fix the finding to match the conditions if the board approves it.
Thank you.
And I know that's pretty pro forma, but it's one of those things that I feel compelled to just say nonetheless. So, I appreciate staff's understanding and the board's indulgence for allowing me to say that.
It's imperative. And more importantly, when we vote on these matters, if we, the board, votes to support your revised conditions, then they are our findings. So, staff can take a, will take the stab at ensuring that they correspond to the conditions that are actually adopted. But when we vote on the resolution, they are our findings that we adopt. Thank you. Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, let's see if the board-
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Oh, this is James Hunt. Just for the record, I wanted to make a correction. Mr. Harding is actually there to speak, or on to speak for item five.
Thank you. But we're not on item five. Yeah, but he's-
No, actually, I originally stated he was going to speak for this case.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, got it. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Okay, I always, I misunderstood in the first place. I thought it was item five anyway. Okay, so, thank you. Okay, so, let's see if the board has any questions of anyone thus far. And first of all, let me see, Mr. Burton, was there anything that you needed to add?
No, Madam Chair, unless you have a question for me.
Okay, no, thank you at this point, but we appreciate it. Madam Vice Chair, do you have any questions of anyone?
No, no, I don't have any questions, but I certainly would like to thank the citizens from that community for coming today. We really do appreciate and would like to see them stay involved, watch this project through if it gets through there, if passed.
Thank you.
As per-
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, Madam Chair, but I do thank the citizens for being here and would also ask for their continued involvement.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, just bidle to my fellow commissioners' comments.
Okay. And with that, I would say the same thing, too. I wanted to thank Ms. Blajin and for appearing and Ms. Lynn as well, and staying involved. And I think you will have, I think, we appreciate your offer to Mr. Tedesco to meet with them and the citizens' desire to meet with you, however virtually, or talk on the phone. So, that would be helpful. So, that concluded the sign-up list. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve CSP-19001 and TCP-1-011-2020, along with the associated conditions outlined in staff's report and is further amended by applicant Exhibit A. And I would ask staff to ensure that the corresponding findings related to the changes in applicant's Exhibit A be addressed by staff.
Second, Madam Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I vote aye. Thank you.
Okay, the ayes have it 4-0. I would normally have taken a break before the next case, which I think is going to be a little long, but I think we had our break during the technical difficulties. So, if, let's go 12 noon, straight up, and we're going to go on with item five. Let's see. Now, we may or may not get through item five, because we may end up having to break for lunch, but we'll give it our best. Item five is the specific design plan-0007-03 for amazon.com services. I'm going to do a check to ensure that we have all the requisite parties. Tom Burke, Thomas Burke.
President, Madam Chair.
Jill Kosak.
President, Madam Chair.
Heather Dalipowski.
Yes, President, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Kim Finch?
Look, there are some, it's a bother to keep-
Okay, somebody's having a conversation again. Kim Finch? Thank you. Glenn Burton?
I'm present.
Thank you. Ben Ryan?
Present.
Helen Hassan? Ivy Thompson?
Madam Chair, Helen Hassan is present.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Hassan. Ivy Thompson? We see you. Okay, thank you. So, is everyone unmuted? Joshua Bryant? I see you. Okay, we'll come back to Joshua Bryant. Roderick Green?
President, Madam Chair.
Christopher Kabat?
Not yet. We've got a lot of people.
Present? Okay. Samantha Mezzo?
I'm present. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Riley?
I'm present.
Macy Nelson?
Present.
Ruth Grober?
She's present, but she's muted.
I am present.
Okay. Lawrence Green?
Madam Chair, this is Macy Nelson. He was on the line. He's our witness. He got disconnected. He was trying to get back on, but he's-
Okay.
He was here. He was trying to go on.
If he needs any assistance, we can help.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we'll, they heard me. They're working on that now for him. Okay. And Ray Crawford? Did I say Ray Crawford? No, that's who's trying to get back on. Okay.
Hi.
Okay, so, okay. Charles Harding?
But he could be in one of those callers.
So, right now, we're trying to help Lawrence Green and Charles Harding. Okay. Well, while we're working on that, let me say this. We have two exhibits from the applicant, applicant's Exhibits 1 and 2, both pertaining to signage. We have an exhibit by an opponent, Mr. Chipman, with an email in opposition. We have 19 exhibits from Macy Nelson as legal counsel. I will tell you, of the 19 exhibits, we can take administrative notice of at least three of them. One is the section 27-538, the page five from the technical staff report, and then, of course, the Washington Gateway Staff Report, and also the Claggett Landing Resolution. That's four at least. We also have Exhibits 5, 12, 13, and 19 were already included in the staff report, but resubmitted by Mr. Nelson. So, that's fine, Mr. Nelson, but I'm just letting everyone else know that we have those. So, Exhibit 5, which is an excerpt from this current staff report, Exhibit 12, the resolution 4-88074 from Collington Center, 13, the resolution from specific design plan 007, and then Exhibit number 19, which is the resolution for Claggett Landing. So, we have those in the record, and all the others are set forth. And I guess, Mr. Nelson, you will deal with them as appropriate. I also need to address that we also have a letter, which is a request to continue this matter, from Mr. Nelson as well. I do need for us to go forward, maybe you can address, Mr. Burke, as we go forward, as you present, and address the request for continuance, and then, and we'll see where that goes. And Ms. Dalipowski, you can address that as well, and we will as well. Well, let me just say this. And also, we do have our principal counsel on the phone, David Warner. The request for a postponement was dated June 29, 2020, and it's Exhibit number four. And basically, Mr. Nelson has asked for a continuance regarding stormwater management issues that he has been unable to get. I don't know if you've gotten them by now, but you've been unable to get information you said that you needed from the county's Department of Permits, Inspection, and Enforcement. Mr. Nelson, is that correct?
That is correct. We've been trying for some time to obtain copies of the stormwater calculations, which are the background information on which the site plan is based. DPI has been unable to produce those to us despite numerous requests. It's been a longstanding problem with DPI. And of course, drainage is a central issue in the SDP case, and we have no ability to critique the stormwater plan because of DPI's inability to respond to our proper request for the documents.
Okay, so, Ms. Dalipowski, do you care to respond?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I'm not really sure that, the first that we heard of this extension request was yesterday, when the materials were submitted by Mr. Nelson. We do have an approved stormwater management concept plan. This application would not have been permitted to go to hearing without an approved stormwater management concept plan. We have our civil engineer on the line, and he can certainly speak in more detail to the approved plan if needed. But I would suggest that we would not be at a hearing without that approved stormwater management concept plan, and that DPI certainly did what they needed to do in evaluating the calculations and computations prior to approving that plan. So, I don't believe that there is any justification for postponement of the hearing in this case.
Let me say this, and I know we have our counsel on the phone. I will just say this. The planning department and our technical staff will send, when we get an application, we have to send out these, send the application and have a review by countless agencies. We have divisions within the planning department. We have things like the State Highway Administration. We have things like the State Highway Administration, we have the Army Corps of Engineers, we have the Department of Natural Resources and things of that nature, we have a fire department, a police department, things of that nature. We will not have the expertise in every conceivable area. So when we send out these referrals for feedback, we have to get comments. So we would not make a decision about adequate police without input from the police, so, and that would be their decision. We would not make a decision with regard to the soils without some sort of soil analysis from someone else. We would not make a decision regarding the signal, traffic warrant signals, without input from either the Department of Public Works and Transportation or the State Highway Administration, depending on where the signal is needed, or allegedly needed. So we have to rely on information that is submitted to us and the authority and expertise of the agency that submits it to us. In this particular case, we have, there is an approved stormwater management concept plan that we will not challenge the agency, where we won't challenge the expertise of the agency. So I don't know that that's a grounds for us to postpone this, and I think that's, we definitely needed to hear from the applicant on that as well. The what we perhaps can do, Mr. Nelson, is, you know, reach out to the agency as well. We, look, we saw your letter, we looked as well, and tried to urge that they respond to you, but I think we have their approved stormwater management concept. We note their approval, and so we have to defer to their judgment on this. Mr. Warner, do you have anything to add to that? Or disagree?
Yeah, only two things to clarify that Mr. Nelson's inability to get records is due to another agency, not ours. And two, nothing in his letter suggests that there is anything wrong with the stormwater either. He just hasn't had a chance to examine the county's report.
So what?
Madam Chair, may I?
Okay. Mr. Nelson?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak over the chair. I'll be very brief. I understood legally exactly what you said. I understand that the planning board relies on what DEPI says to the planning board. But I believe, in this system, my clients have the right to vet what DEPI did. And the long and the short of it is, DEPI, due to some bureaucratic dysfunction, has been able to produce these documents to us. So we've been unable to vet it. We've been unable to present evidence on one of the key criteria for an SDP, which is the drainage issue. We have an expert witness report, exhibit six, which says that we cannot critique the plan after this information. So for all those reasons, those are the reasons I sought the postponement, but I understand your ruling, and we're prepared to proceed, and we'll preserve that point for another day.
Let's do, let's preserve that, thank you. It is duly noted on the record, Mr. Nelson, and we hope that you get the requested information from DEPI. Okay. With that, I'm going to turn to Mr. Burke to proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the planning board, good morning. Actually, good afternoon, I'm sorry. My name is Thomas Burke, and I'm with the Urban Design Section. The proposal before you is a specific design plan amendment, SDP dash 0007 dash 03 for amazon.com services, which includes a Type 2 Tree Conservation Plan, TCP2 dash 067 dash 96 dash 07. The applicant is seeking approval of an amendment to the specific design plan to increase the land area covered by pavement, parking, loading, and circulation for a warehouse and distribution facility, used for which was previously approved by the SDP and permitted on the site. This application also includes minor alterations to the existing building. Slide two, please. The site is located in the eastern part of Prince George's County, in planning area 74A, in Council District Four. Slide three, please. More specifically, more specifically, the site is located in the northeast quadrant of Queens Court and Prince George's Boulevard in Upper Marlboro. Slide four, please. This property is in the EIA zone, within the Collington Center planned business community, and surrounding on all sides the other commercial industrial warehouse and distribution uses in the EIA zone. Slide five, please. Serial photo illustrates the current conditions of the property with the existing warehouse and distribution facility, as well as the parking, loading, and type circulation. Slide six, please. The site is relatively flat and does not contain regulated environmental features. Site was previously determined to contain 100-year flood plain, for which an easement was placed in the southeast section of the property. However, DER, now DEPI, made a determination and provided a letter dated July 11, 2000, which is included in the backup, that there is no flood plain on the property. The applicant is currently going through the process of recording a partial release of that flood plain easement, and the condition that this be recorded prior to certification has been incorporated into the recommendations of the staff report. Slide seven, please. The site has frontage on Queens Court, Prince George's Boulevard, and Branch Court to the north. Access to Collington Center is derived from Crane Highway, shown there in orange, to the east, which is a master planned freeway. Slide eight, please. This view further illustrates the current conditions of the existing warehouse and distribution facility relative to the surrounding uses. Slide nine, please. The site plan shows the ultimate built-out condition of the site, with the existing roughly square-shaped warehouse and distribution building in the center of the property, the existing parking shown as unshaded, and the proposed parking, loading, and circulation shown in the dark shading. The subject of this application is an amendment to the previously approved SDP, and involves an expansion of the parking, loading, and circulation on the site for a total of 882 parking spaces and nine loading spaces, as well as minor changes to the existing warehouse building, including incorporating 152 of those parking spaces inside the building, as shown on this plan. It should be noted that with this application, there will be no increase in the gross floor area of the existing 290,25 square foot building, approved with the original SDP. However, based on the anticipated use of the site, transportation planning section applied a 0.4 FAR or floor area ratio, which is typical for the EIA zone, and based on the generation rates from the ITE trip manual, trip generation manual, excuse me, found that the implied trip cap would not be exceeded. Details of this finding can be found on page 12 of the staff report. Slide 10, please. This application is the subject, is subject to the requirements of the landscape manual. A landscape and lighting plan was provided with the application and contained deficiencies and errors, with conditions included in the staff report. However, overall, the plan was found to be acceptable. Slide 11, please. As I stated, minor modifications are proposed to the existing warehouse. The east elevation shown, excuse me, the east elevation, east elevation shows the addition of loading and access doors and a canopy. Slide 12, please. The north and west elevations show new storefront fenestration and vehicular access into the building for the 152 indoor parking spaces. The warehouse walls will also be painted with two shades of gray with, and feature horizontal blue striping, the magic pattern already established on the southern facade. Slide 13, please. As part of this proposal, the applicant demonstrated through this truck turning exhibit that large tractor trailers will be able to safely navigate onto and through the site via access from Queens Court. Slide 14, please. A Type 2 Tree Conservation Plan was provided with this application. Please note that although the subject site is included on the overall plan, another lot is being delineated here. The condition to correct this is provided in the staff report. Otherwise, the TCP2 is found to be in general conformance with the approved CDP TCP1 and subsequent revisions. Urban Design Staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve specific design plan amendment, SDP dash 0007 dash 03, and Type 2 Tree Conservation Plan, TCP2 dash 067 dash 96 dash 07 for amazon.com services, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report dated July 9, 2020. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Okay, let's see if there are any questions, I mean, Mr. Burke. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo? Okay. No questions, okay. So with that, I'm going to turn to Ms. Dala Paski.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. My name is Heather Dala Paski. I'm a land use and zoning attorney with the law firm of Wire Gill LLP, here representing Amazon today. I know we did a roll call of folks at the start of the hearing, but I'll just briefly remind you who from our team is here. Samantha Mezzo and Rodrick Green on behalf of Amazon. We have Josh Bryant, our civil engineer, who's with CPH, and we have Chris Cabot, our traffic consultant, who is with Wells and Associates. Mr. Burke's presentation was very thorough. We're in full agreement with his presentation, and so I don't think that there's any need for us to reiterate everything that he very well covered previously. We are in full agreement with the staff report and with the conditions of approval as proposed, so we will abide by those conditions, and we are comfortable with those. I will mention, Madam Chair, you mentioned the two exhibits that we had submitted yesterday for inclusion, which are pictures of the existing monument sign. We don't plan to affirmatively refer to them unless there happens to be any questions, because there was a condition of approval with regard to the sign, but there's no need to turn to those unless there's a question. I will turn to Amazon in a moment to give a brief overview of what this facility is and how it operates. I am aware that we have some opposition here, so we will be very brief in our opening remarks, and reserve the majority of our time for rebuttal as may be needed. And I did just want to make one comment on some of the things I expect you might hear from some other folks in the presentations later throughout this hearing. You may hear some comparisons between this application and an application that the planning board heard last week for Washington Gateway. I will note that while the end user of both of the sites is Amazon, it would just suggest that there are significant differences between those two cases, and each case needs to stand alone. In this case, we have different sites, we have different zoning, and we have different processes. This is a specific design plan amendment that was a preliminary plan, and there are inherent different findings that needs to be made for each one. So to just briefly set the stage, as you heard, this is an amendment to an existing specific design plan and an existing warehouse. This warehouse was in operation up until last summer by the previous user, with its inherent operations, circulation, and vehicle trips that it was creating. At the time of approval of the original specific design plan, which was about 20 years ago now at this point, and the amendment subsequent to that, the findings that are required to be made for an approval of a specific design plan, which are the same findings that are required to be made for an amendment, were all found to be satisfied several times previously, and that included finding that there was room within the trip cap for this building, among other findings. Similarly here, this amendment does not propose to change the building in terms of square footage from the 290,225 square feet that was originally approved, constructed approximately 20 years ago, and exists on the site today and has generally been in operation that entire time. In this case, we are merely proposing to add paving for parking and circulation, and notably, I would suggest, if we can talk more to this, that the increase in parking does not really bear a direct relation to any changes in traffic. I'm sure folks are generally familiar with Amazon. You see the little sprinter vans running around your neighborhoods. So the drivers come onto the site, they park their car in a vehicle parking space, they go to the van's storage space and pick up the van and head out. So just wanted to put that out there. We can certainly get into it in more detail, but to note that increases in paving for parking do not necessarily have a direct relationship on trips. So I'll just briefly summarize as fully detailed in the applicant's submittals, as well as in the staff report, and as you heard in Mr. Burke's presentation, the five findings that are required to be made for approval of this application are fully satisfied. The project conforms to the Comprehensive Design Plan and Landscape Manual. It will be adequately served with public facilities. It adequately drains surface water. It's in conformance with the grower TCP2, and regulated environmental features will be preserved to the maximum extent possible. So I will stop speaking for now. Amazon, Samantha, or Rodrick are going to just briefly give an overview for your use on the operations. Chris Cabot will just very briefly touch on the trip cap, and Josh Bryant will very briefly touch on stormwater, just because those do seem to be some of the questions here. At any time, we are all here and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Again, my name is Samantha Mezzo, for the record, and I am an entitlements manager at Amazon. We are incredibly pleased to be here today, to help join our consultants and experts, to be able to provide a summary of what this last mile station that we are proposing here. We are really looking forward to continuing our work in Prince George's County. At the outset, I do want to put on the record that this delivery station is very different, and indeed much smaller than the Amazon fulfillment centers that you may have seen on the news. The closest fulfillment center to the site is indeed in Baltimore. What we're proposing here is a much smaller, the last mile delivery station, which is smaller in nature, and is the last stop between purchasing a product on Amazon and having it delivered to your home. This facility is the result of an outstanding workforce, strong local support, and incredible customers. Our associates and customers in the region are also your residents, and we want to ensure that we are being good neighbors. Delivery stations do create many full-time and part-time jobs, and we are pleased to provide more information on that. But in particular, I want to talk a little bit about the operations of this particular station. So while our experts can provide you with an explanation of the details, I wanted to give you a quick summary as well. When you hit buy on amazon.com, generally, the products will go to a larger fulfillment center, and then, the products will then be put on a truck and then brought to this delivery station. Generally, those trucks arrive overnight and are received by our associates who work at the station, who also arrive overnight. Generally, in this case, we're anticipating that the associates would arrive at around 1:30 or 2:00 in the morning. Once the trucks arrive and the associates arrive, the packages are offloaded, and the customer packages are sorted, picked to different routes, and placed on movable baker's racks and staged for dispatch. Generally, around 9 o'clock AM, in order, which is timed very clearly, in order to avoid the peak hour, is when most of our delivery drivers would approach the site. They would approach the site as Heather identified in their own personal cars, and then pick up the vans that are also sitting on the site. They would then drive over to the delivery station, where the vans would be loaded in stages. And this is an important idea to understand, which is, from a traffic perspective, Amazon's production and Amazon's logistics on these delivery stations has really evolved over time and has been curated. Our intent and our effort is to take the trips off the peak hour time period, to make sure that both the trips for the delivery station associates, who are coming in to pick up the vans, but most importantly, for the vans when they are coming out, are not going to be impacting the peak hours of the surrounding roads. And that is borne out in Mr. Cabot's traffic report and the trip count. To that end, the station is designed for the vans to be loaded in a staged manner, so that vans are loaded at approximately 40 vans at a ton. They are then sent off onto the street in, against a staged manner, based on the operational nature of this particular site. And so, through the operations of this particular building, there will not be a situation where hundreds of vans are thrown onto the streets during one particular time. hundreds of vans are thrown onto the streets during one particular time, rather, this is a very, almost puzzle piece-like logistics, in order to both load the vans in a very quick manner, and then to have them on the streets for such a time period that they are not impacting the peak hours. The vans would then leave in these waves. The waves leave approximately around 20, approximately 20 minutes after each one. And then, they would return about eight hours later, again, outside the peak hour, empty, where at that point, again, we're outside the peak hour, the drivers would drop off the vans, pick up their own vehicles, then drive home. Again, this is an incredibly well-thought-out process that is being pursued elsewhere around the country. It is a manner in which Amazon really believes it can be a win-win for everybody, to the extent that our customers are satisfied with receiving their packages outside of the early morning, or that they're happy to receive packages during the day. And then, more importantly, we're happy to keep our trips off the roads during the peak hour time periods. And so with that, I hope that gives you an overview of how this station would work in terms of an operational standpoint, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a quick question. One is, you know, I reviewed the memo, the March 26, 2020 memo that's in the record, and I also wanted to, and going through everything beforehand, I noticed that you have a well-oiled system for not impacting traffic during peak hour times. So that part in and of itself is good, particularly the vans that depart maybe around 9:30 in the morning, because it's after the morning rush hour, so I don't have a problem with that. My concern is, my question pertains to these trucks at 1:30 in the morning, because those are the bigger trucks, not the vans. And I want to make sure, I wanted to ask you about the noise and the impact to the surrounding community.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. You know, again, the truck trips are calibrated and are designed to arrive overnight. This particular community is indeed, the surrounding properties are industrial in nature. This site has been used industrially for a very long time. The most recent user was the DPI Seafood Distribution Center, where there were also trucks that were arriving, and I don't know what time they were arriving, but really, again, the truck trips here, and we're not talking about a tremendous number, I know Mr. Cabot can provide the exact number, but they are coming in really in ones and twos. There's not a situation that where there are going to be five or six trucks that are lining up and beeping, and backup beepers, and all of those things. They're really designed, again, to accommodate and be as contextual and harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood as is commensurate with an industrially-zoned property and a property that has been used as a warehouse. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yes, it does. I thank you for explaining that. Let's see if the board has other questions for you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo?
One question, or actually a couple, depending. How many employees do you anticipate working at this facility?
Yeah, so we're looking at approximately 190 Amazon employees, and then there'll be approximately a little bit more than 200 employees who are working as the delivery drivers.
Okay, my follow-up question, is there any provision there for bicycle racks in the event people, any of the employees come in by bicycle?
That's a good question. I think Mr. Bryant will address that. I actually don't know the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Okay, so that, I think that concludes the questions for you at this point, Ms. Mezzo.
No problem, I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Nelson.
Is awesome here, so we're happy to talk about the site.
Okay, so let me, let me turn back to Ms. Dalaipowski, Dalaipowski, I'm sorry, you know, I keep messing that up, I'm so sorry.
No, I answered to many versions of my last name.
Okay, thank you. So who did you, did you, who did you want to put on next, or you, or you, do you want to put people on only if there are questions?
Yeah, well, maybe it makes sense, just since there was a question about bicycles, and Josh Bryant, we did have sort of lined up to speak. So Josh, if you just want to talk briefly and answer Mr. Geraldo's bicycle question, and maybe Josh, if you could just very, very distinctly just mention the approved stormwater management concept plan as well in your remarks, and I think we can keep it short.
Thank you.
Sure, sure. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yes, we are proposing two bicycle racks at the northwest corner of the building, so those will be new and those will be provided for anyone that needs to use them.
Okay, get ready, Mr. Bryant. Get ready, Mr. Bryant. Commissioner Geraldo, is that it?
When you say two bike racks accommodate, how many bikes?
They would accommodate four bicycles total, two on each side.
Okay. What's your, what's your experience in terms of with the employees biking to work? The only reason I ask is the facility for four doesn't seem like much.
I would, I would say it depends, each area is different, depending on where the actual facility is located. We can, I mean, we can definitely, definitely look into, you know, increasing the number of bicycle racks.
Okay. Does that a property you would make?
Yeah, I think we're comfortable with that, looking at Samantha, and I think I saw a nod there. It's a large site. You know, we did add the number of racks, this was a comment, I believe, that we received at SDRC a few weeks ago, and so we did add the number of racks that we were asked to. But again, it is a large site, I think that we can certainly accommodate an increase. Yeah.
So what increase? What increase? Well, why don't you think about that while we go forward? What increase are you talking about? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Hewitt?
Yes.
I do have a question.
I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair?
Yeah, I did not hear anyone talk about the possibility of, I think it's flex employees, where you allow individuals to use their own cars to deliver packages. And if that is the case, if you're looking at that for this site, approximately, how many employees would you say would be using their own vehicles? Would you predict?
Sorry, yeah, and I do apologize. Yes, on the flex, so flex is generally a project, a process where individuals who have additional time can go and pick up packages from the site and then deliver them. That is part of the general Amazon delivery station services. We are anticipating approximately, excuse me, 60 flex employees and flex drivers here at this particular site.
Thank you for that. It set forth, I didn't see the number necessarily, but it is set forth in the March 26, 2020 memo, because I too had to learn the difference between Amazon Logistics and Amazon Flex, so.
Yeah, no, and I apologize for that oversight. It was simply, I was trying to provide the overall, and people are usually much more focused on the vans, so I'm glad to have an opportunity to talk about the flex opportunity.
And their timeframe is the same, for the most part? In terms of picking up items and delivering them?
So generally, the flex cars would come in the afternoons, and so that is probably where you would see the most peak hour trips, is in the afternoons, as in the PM peak hour associated with the flex trips. But, you know, Chris, Mr. Cabot can address that, but even with those flex trips, my understanding is, is that the PM peak hour cap is still under what had been previously approved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does that conclude the questions for Ms. Mezzo at this time? Okay, and, okay, so Mr. Cabot may, he might be able to address that question when we get to him, but I think we were going to reserve him for questions, Ms. Dalaipowski.
Yeah, I think maybe we could just go to Chris, and Chris, if you want to touch on the questions that were just asked, and I suppose if anybody else has any other questions for Chris at this time, and to the extent it makes any sense, he can give sort of just a quick overview of their trip cap analysis, if that's helpful, or if anybody has any questions on that.
That's great.
But why don't we go to Chris, and if you could start with answering, responding to the questions on the, on the flex?
Sure. Hi, Chris Cabot, here with Wells and Associates. And the explanations given here by Samantha and Heather are spot on, they did a great job, but the flex drivers are generally in the afternoon session of the deliveries, and they would, they come on demand. So only when, from my understanding, only when Amazon has a demand and those, those packages don't get put into the sprinter vans, that the flex drivers are called upon. And they do generally access the site, you know, from the 3:00, 3:30 to 5:00 o'clock hour, and then, you know, leave, obviously, to, once they pick up the package and then move on. So that is, that is part of the percentage of trips that are using the site during the PM peak hour of the adjacent street. So, and then, onto the trip cap, just as Samantha had mentioned, Amazon's operation is specific for this delivery station, and it is an off-peak operation. And our comparison is, for the trip cap, is for the comparison of peak hour commuter, peak hour AM and PM per generation, and that's what we compare to the warehouse. So while there are trips coming on and off the site, the majority of them happen at traditional, traditionally non-peak hours, midday, and then into the late evening. And then, as you see in the record in our, our trip cap memorandum, with that operation, we are below the, the number of trips that, peak hour trips that would be generated by the warehouse that is permitted.
So I would invite everyone to also look at, there is in our backup, the May 21, 2020 trip cap comparison submitted by Mr. Cabot of Wells and Associates, and on page three, they do talk about the flex drivers as well. That is what I flagged, also, you know, just to ensure about the noise and that backup stuff. So anyway, it is in our backup, May 21, 2020. So let's see if there are any other questions. Was there anything else you cared to say, Mr. Cabot?
I'll respond to questions, I think, again, Samantha had done a great job of explaining the operation, and, you know, the reason why, you know, that this is an off-peak operation and we have the, that we are within the trip cap.
So I think this is, there's going to be, I can see, we have our own transportation expert on the line. Mr. Macy Nelson has his own transportation person on the line, and then, of course, we have you, Mr. Cabot, too, the applicant's transportation expert, so we'll be getting ready. Okay, so that's, was that it for you? For the applicant's case in chief?
Yes, Madam Chair, we're just happy to answer any questions that anybody may have going forward.
Okay, so with that, and I think our board asked all the questions that they wanted to ask at this juncture. So I'm going to now turn to Mr. Macy Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me satisfactorily?
Yes, indeed, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Macy Nelson, I'm representing in this case Ray and Kathy Crawford, who reside at 1340 Crane Highway. I represent Charles Riley, 16770 Claggett Landing Road, and I'm also representing UFCW Local 400, which is a union based here in Land O'lantern, has many members throughout the county. If I could ask staff to bring up our exhibit number one, please.
The neighborhood.
Identify.
It's the neighborhood.
Yes, that's right, it's the neighborhood, exhibit one. No, I'm sorry, from the, our exhibits.
The opposition exhibits.
Go to the thing, go back, there you go.
Whip, whip, whip.
Five. Item five.
No, I'm terribly sorry, we're trying to get to the protestants exhibits, they're 19.
We're, we're working on it, those, these, this is.
I'll take it far.
We're, we're trying to locate it here. I have my hard copy right in front of me, and presumably, the board members do too, so I'm looking at it. So we don't.
Those weren't on there. Theirs were not, they're set for one.
I don't think they generally are. They're on the website.
They're on the website, that's right.
So if you go to, you know.
It's on the back.
Well, how do we get it on, so we can get the website on here too?
Whoever's viewing, they can go on the website, but there's not.
And they can share their screen.
Okay, Mr. Nelson, I'm gonna let our tech, I'm gonna let our, I don't speak tech, so I'm gonna let our tech folks, because it, all of these are on the website, and although thankfully, we, I have the, I have the, they're on the website for this case with the staff report. And I, you know, have a hard copy, I can see it, but, but if, if someone can pull it up on the website, we can get, we can share your screen, so we can all see it, if that helps. And Mr. Nelson, I don't know that you're capable of.
I thought I submitted that report, it's where the instructions, I spoke with staff yesterday to confirm receipt of them.
Okay.
Yes, we received them, they're on the website, they're posted on the website, this is the staff's presentation, all we have to do is pull it up and share the screen.
What, do you want to tell them that, somebody, we're, we're, I'm gonna let the tech people talk to you, because I don't speak that language. Okay, it's coming, it looks like.
Thank you.
There you go, there you go. Twenty-third. There you go. Go down to five. Additional backup.
Yes, yes, back.
There's no additional.
Oh, there's not additional.
And there it is, yes, it is.
Additional backup.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, we're not sure which one it is.
Okay, let's try that one.
Just hang on. It's a minute to download. No, wait a minute, it's still downloading.
So there, momentarily.
There we go.
Okay, so it's coming. That's, that's the neighborhood, right there, that's exhibit one.
Thank you for doing that.
No worries.
The purpose, the purpose of this image, of course, is to try to orient the Planning Board to the neighborhood. We have the new Amazon warehouse on the west side of 301. You see the pin for 1340 Crane Highway, that's the residence of the Crawfords, and Mr. Riley's on Claggett Landing Road a little bit to the northeast, but if we can go to the next image, it's a blow-up of the, of the Crawford residence. Now exhibit, our exhibit two.
Okay, so that should be the very next one. This is what it looks like, I have mine, I have mine here. Okay. No, this, this is it. That's exhibit number two. I keep saying that we have it.
Or he could share his screen.
He may, I asked that question.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
So they, so we have a number...
Wait, isn't that it? Go back.
That's it? No, that's not it.
That's it. Madam Chair, I don't wish to belabor the point, but I submitted these exhibits in accordance with the instructions, and each one is labeled.
They are.
Exhibit one with a description.
They are labeled. I, because I have mine, so I know they're labeled.
I have mine as well, though.
So we all, we have, we have our copies, so.
All right.
Okay, so hold... They're not, yeah, they're not, they're whoever uploaded. They're not in the sequence, the same sequence.
Mr. Nelson?
Mr. Nelson?
This is Andrej Chakli.
This is Andrej Chakli.
Are you able to share your series?
That's the first one. That's the first one, not the second one. That's not the one he's talking about.
Yep.
Madam Chair?
Yes. This is the second one.
The planning board has the hard copies in front of each member of the planning board?
We do.
Okay, so, all right.
Thank goodness, okay.
Let me just describe exhibit two. Exhibit two was really just a log to show the proximity of the Crawford residence with the proposed Amazon facility. I think each member of the board...
It's the one with the yellow, the yellow push, the yellow pushpin across Crane Highway. Got it.
I don't wish to spend more time trying to find exhibit.
Got it. We have the yellow pushpin, okay, depicting, it's from two different angles. Exhibit one and exhibit two show the yellow pushpin where the Crawfords live from two separate angles. Okay, we're good.
Thank you. All right, my client's opposed SDP 00703, which would permit the Amazon last mile facility. And I'm gonna give an overview of the case. Also with me, we have Ruth Grover, who's a land planning consultant, Larry Green, who's a traffic expert, Ray Crawford, Charles Riley, and some other citizens. And my goal is really to try to orient the board to the themes of our case. And then these other witnesses will follow up on some of those themes. But our first step in this, our analysis of this case, was to understand the lineage of approvals. We know that this case arises out of a CDP from 1978, and we undertook to try to recreate the lineage that takes us from the present all the way back to 1978. And so I want to just go through that lineage. We have SDP 007 from 2000. That's exhibit 13 in my submission, exhibit 13. And this document states, "The development of this site must be in accordance with CDP 9006 and A6965 as amended." All right, so the CDP from 2000 directs us back to the 1978 CDP. Then we know in 1992, moving back in time, that the planning board clarified the list of permitted uses for the Collington Center, and then created a mechanism to add a new use to that list. And that's in exhibit 10 of our exhibits. This is an important exhibit, and I would like for staff to bring it up. It's the exhibit I identified as exhibit 10 in my submission two days ago.
Is this exhibit from John Rhodes to the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Madam Chair, this is Tom Burke. I am able to share the screen if that makes things easier.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
I would just need permission to do so from the organizer.
Okay, so are you the organizer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Click yes, Kenny.
Yes. Okay. But we, but some of us have it, so it's, so this is the memo dated April 27, 1992, for John Rhodes to the planning board.
Go ahead, Tom.
All right. Is staff, is staff able to bring that up?
They're doing it now.
Thank you.
Did you see this?
No. Go ahead, Tom Burke.
So you saw the exhibit.
Right.
Okay, so when I went through this one, this was a little bit crazy. But I was in there. I was scared, so.
Thank you. Appreciate staff doing that. But the, the point of exhibit 10 is to present the document that describes the uses that are permitted in the Collington Center. And it also describes a mechanism to add a use to the list. And if we go to the second page here, I want to, the second paragraph on page one.
Yes.
"Applicants for uses not included," and Ruth Grover will describe this in greater detail. But this is the mechanism that the planning board curated to add a use to the list of permitted uses in the Collington Center. Our position is gonna be, will be, is that the applicant's proposed last mile distribution center is not on the list of permitted uses. And if we go to exhibit 11, please, if staff would do that. Exhibit nine, rounder, I'm sorry.
The use category list from the CDP text.
That's it. This is perfect, right? Thank you. All right, so this is a document prepared by staff, which, which puts in one place all the permitted uses in the Collington Center as of 1992. And the relevant use here is warehouses and wholesaling establishments. The proposed use is not a wholesaling establishment. The proposed use is not a warehouse. It's a parcel hub. It's a last mile distribution center. So we say it's not on that list. But, all right, so that's in 1992. We'll come back to that. Let's move back in time, because we have a preliminary plan from 1988. This is exhibit 12. I'm just trying to trace the lineage back to the beginning.
Okay, so, and...
So this is, this is the resolution, the preliminary plan 88287 from 1988. And as we all know, preliminary plans traditionally have the traffic analysis in it. This one does not. Condition one is relevant here. It says, condition one says, "There must be conformance with the conditions of the approved CDP 8712." These documents tell us that the analysis, that the transportation analysis that governs the traffic analysis in this case appears in this CDP. So we spoke to staff about that, and staff said that Section 7 of the CDP, this is our exhibit eight. If you could bring that up, please. Section 7, the transportation analysis of the CDP, there was the trip cap. And our legal argument, Madam Chair, and the members of the board, is that staff was required to analyze the traffic that has been already allocated to the Collington Center. And that process would have required them to review all of the approval resolutions for development in the Collington Center. So we asked staff for that, and we did a Public Information Act request for all those documents. Staff produced those to us. Those documents were incomplete. We reviewed every one of those plans. In fact, we paid a fee of $550 for, to get the copies. We reviewed every plan, and those documents are incomplete. There's no way any reasonable person can look at those documents and understand what's been built out at the Collington Center. So for all those reasons, we assert that staff has not justified the traffic from this proposed use. Now, let me go back to the issue of whether the Amazon last mile facility is a permitted use. We assert it's not. We know that the CDP at page I-1-3 has a very general list of permitted uses. We know that 1992, the planning board provided a more detailed list, which included warehouses and wholesaling establishments. As I said earlier, an Amazon last mile facility is a parcel hub, not a traditional warehouse. I cited to exhibit nine, which is the formal list of the permitted uses. The CDP, correct, exhibit 10, the 1992 Rhodes memorandum, describes the mechanism to add a use to the list. And we say that the applicant had a legal obligation to seek approval to add this proposed distribution center to the list of approved uses. It did not, and because it did not, it failed to exhaust its administrative right to do so. And for that reason, the planning board should disapprove this SDP. And then there is a more...
But it's still weird.
Narrow problem. And that has to do with the traffic generation. We all know from these cases that staff goes to the IT manual to get a trip generation rate. And we know that the IT manual has different uses for different, different trip generation rates for different uses. And so step one of the inquiry is, what trip generation use code should we use for the proposed development? Now, there are five or six of these last mile facilities coming in to Prince George's County. The planning board heard the Washington Gateway case last week. It also is a last mile center. The description of the use was identical to the description today provided by Ms. Mazo. Big trucks come in during the night. They unload the products. They pass them off to the smaller Amazon trucks who leave the site in off-peak hours. And when there's a shortfall, they have flex drivers. In the Washington Gateway case, the applicant submitted a traffic report and used ITE Code 155. And staff endorsed that use of that code, ITE 155. And if you go to the IT manual, this is the description of ITE Code 155. "Storage and direct distribution of e-commerce product to end users." Let me repeat. "Storage and direct distribution of e-commerce product to end users." Staff required that. And if you go to the staff report in the Washington Gateway case, which is...
Exhibit 18?
Exhibit 18. Thank you.
Welcome.
You will see that staff, in his staff report, relied on the high trip generation rate generated by Code 155. The planning board approved this plan last week. We haven't seen the resolution. But my understanding from the vote at the end of the case was that the planning board was gonna make, adopt a resolution which included these transportation findings. The key here is that staff, in the Washington Gateway case, for an Amazon last mile facility, just seven days ago, said you should use ITE 155. We agree with that. We didn't challenge that last week. We believe ITE 155 is the proper land use code to use. Now, let's look at what the applicant did in this case. If we could go, bring up the Wells report from May 21. This is the backup at page 56. And Madam Chair, you cited this earlier when you talked about the flex driver. This is the backup file, page 56, Wells &amp; Associates memo from Chris Cabot PE dated May 21, 2020.
Yep, let me just pull it up, and then hold on a second. Yeah, okay, I got it. May, this is May 21st? May 21st? Oh, this is a different one.
May 21.
A May 21. Okay, May 21. I got it.
I believe this is the trip cap verification submitted by Wells &amp; Associates to staff, May 21, 2020. Let's flip ahead to page, the fourth page of this report, please. Table 2.
Got it.
Scroll down, please. A little lower. There you go. Land use. This is, I'm looking at table 2. It's got the red header where it says land use. Does the board see that on their screen or on their paper?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Trip cap, warehousing. One, trip generation based on ITE Trip Generation Manual. Land use code 150. 150. Now we know from the IT manual, let me describe the standard warehouse for 150. I'm reading right from the manual. "Products stored on-site typically for more than one month." Let me repeat. "Products stored on-site typically for more than one month." Now Larry Green will give you the nuts and bolts of this, but if you look at the trip generation rate for land use code 150 that Wells has advocated here, it's much lower than the trip generation rate for 1,000 square feet of land use code, which 155, that staff required and you adopted last week in the Washington Gateway project. Now, Mr. Green has crunched the numbers. The differences are material and are, let me be precise. The applicant fundamentally erred in relying on land use code 150, because that code is for a standard warehouse where products are stored on-site typically for more than one month. And in contrast, as Ms. Mazo described in her opening remarks, we have 18 wheels coming down from Baltimore at 1:30 in the morning. They unload, and then they get all the new product onto the Amazon Prime trucks that morning. And those trucks go out allegedly after peak hours. That's a fundamental error, and for that reason, we assert that this board should disapprove the application. So on the traffic piece, let me just add this footnote. The Claggett Landing Resolution, our exhibit 19, this is this body's decision from 2004, which disapproved a residential development on Claggett Landing on the other side of Route 3. The, no, it approved the development on the condition that Route 301 be approved and improved, and that hasn't been done. We assert that if the Claggett Landing project can't proceed, this project should not also be allowed to proceed. So for all those reasons, we're gonna ask the board to disapprove the application. And our next witness is Ruth Grover.
Okay. Can I see if the board has any questions? Have you at this time, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, let me find.
So Madam Vice Chair?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
He muted.
Yes.
Just to be clear, so the position that the opponents are taking, Mr. Macy, is that it's not a permitted use?
It's two things.
We're taking several positions.
That's just one.
The first is, it's not a permitted use, because it's not on the list of permitted uses. And there's a mechanism in the, in the planning board document that allows the applicant to apply to add a use to the list. Spelled out. That's our first position. The second position is that in order to fundamentally understand the traffic, you need to go, one needs to go back to the traffic section 7 of the CDP and analyze whether this project conforms to that. Staff was unable to do that. We did a PIA request for the documents. I paid $550 for the documents. I paid $550 for the documents. We spent days reviewing every word on those documents, and I will say, those documents were incomplete, and no one can draw any conclusion from them. In fact, staff told us informally that the documents have been lost, many of them. So you can't do that process, but the law requires it. So that's a separate reason it should be disapproved. The third is that the applicant's traffic generation, traffic report is fundamentally flawed. It relies on a land use code 150, which is in stark contrast with what this board did last week where it required land use code 155. And it would be arbitrary and capricious to allow this project to proceed when the, when just last week, seven days ago, the planning board required the analysis under use code 155. So those are the core points.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so no one, that was it. Okay, thank you. So Ms. Grover?
Hi.
Good afternoon.
I think I need you to share the screen. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Oh, good, good. Hello, my name is Ruth Grover. I've worked as a land planner for many years in a variety of private and public positions, including currently working as a consultant for Macy Nelson, which brings me to this hearing. I've been asked to testify as to my knowledge of process and substance as it relates to the subject application, specific design plan SDP 0007-03. The first issue in the project is the nature of the use and whether the project is permitted, a permitted use in Collington Center. The second issue relates to the lineage of approvals for the project and whether those approvals bear out that this use fits within the allowances of the previous traffic analysis, analyses that have been performed for the site in prior approvals, namely the CDP 9006 and preliminary plan of subdivision 4-88074. With respect to the land use, a comprehensive design plan for the project was approved back in 1978 with a general list of permitted uses, page I3, and a general table, page 3-25, of square footage gross municipal area by stage and use, which was interpreted to include warehousing and distribution on a detailed list approved by the district council. In April of 1992, then-chairman John Rhodes wrote a memorandum which laid out an administrative process for getting additional uses added to the permitted use list for Collington Center. In that memorandum, he said that for uses not listed, the applicant would have to apply in writing, providing any information necessary for the planning director to determine that the new use would not be a net generator of trips in AM or PM peak hours, that it was not primarily retail in character, and that it would be compatible with the uses already listed. Then it specified that the written application would be considered by the transportation planning section, the development review division, and the project manager with the ultimate decision to add the use or not, then made by the planning director, with that decision appealable to the planning board. Our assertion is that the use proposed in this application is not the standard warehousing and distribution contemplated for Collington Center where products are normally stored on-site in excess of a month per the ITE analysis for use 150. But is a parcel hub utilized by companies such as Amazon to get their products the last mile to the retail purchaser, the end-line user, which they aim to do often in 24 hours. As such, the applicant should have followed the procedure outlined above to get the parcel hub added as a permitted use. Further, this new proposed use is a higher trip, traffic generator than the standard warehouse, and thus should have triggered the need for a new traffic analysis. We have our transportation engineer Larry Green with us today to testify separately on that issue. Now, in fact, the applicant's own transportation memorandum cites the land use 150, the standard warehouse. Early in our interest in this case, we talked to staff regarding transportation-related evaluation of the project. We asked how traffic analysis was done for the park. We were told that the original traffic study for the project was contained in section seven of the original comprehensive design plan document, and that when a new plan came along that needed transportation analysis, they compared it to the parameters contained in that section of the CDP and made an evaluation as to whether there was sufficient capacity or adequacy to absorb the additional traffic. We were told that a new traffic study was required for the project because it was being considered the same use, because they did not believe it would generate additional trips. We then asked if they had a running tally of the development in the Collington Center, and were told that the history of Collington, with the multiple revisions to the various plans and their boundaries, were not clear in the consolidated records of the comprehensive design zone. In fact, they stated that they were working on organizing their records, which ones were well organized, but that those records were mostly paper files and that they had been moved around and some tossed over the years. At that point, we undertook our own research, requesting the county to provide copies of all the approved detailed and specific design plans in the area called Collington Center by the transportation planning section. We were planning to tabulate the square footage ourselves and compare it to the allowances in section seven of the comprehensive design plan. We attempted this task, but the information provided was incomplete, which led us to wonder how the transportation planning section could rely on this methodology to decide if additional development should be allowed. During this time, we took a closer look at the preliminary plan of subdivision for the project and confirmed that it was silent on the issue of trip cap, while requiring strict conformance to the requirements of the comprehensive design plan for the project. So in conclusion, the use is not warehousing and distribution. It is a parcel hub, and the applicant should have gone through the outlined administrative process to have the use added as a permitted use to the list of permitted uses in Collington Center. And the use is a much larger trip generator than standard warehousing and distribution, and therefore is not included in the list of approvals for the site, which included the comprehensive design plan, a preliminary plan of subdivision, and specific design plans, and should have required a separate traffic analysis. That's about all I have. If you have any questions regarding my testimony, I would be happy to try to answer them for you at this time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Grover. Let's see if there are any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
You're muted. Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go back to Mr. Nelson. I'm going to have our counsel respond to some of these things a bit. I'm going to let you go forward with your case and your, and your, your witness list, Mr. Nelson. But I'm going to tell you in about, in 25 minutes, at quarter to two, we're breaking for lunch. Okay?
All right. Our next witness is Larry Green.
Okay.
Mr. Green, are you on here?
And Mr. Green is going to discuss traffic. He has a traffic analysis. So we'll then be turning to Mr. Burton and perhaps Mr. Cabot. Okay. Mr. Green?
He's been on, and I've been texting because he's been having, he's been getting kicked off.
But he can also, there's a way, if we can get, he can also phone in too, if that helps him.
May I have permission to call him right now?
Sure, or we can do, yeah, sure, you can. Do you want to take a few minutes?
Or you can call.
I think we can, can we get Ryan? I think we can reach out to Mr. Green. So if you hold on a second, Mr. Nelson. And what you might want to do while we're doing that is mute yourself and then phone him anyway. Oh, he's, oh, there, he's being contacted now.
Through the chat.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to remind you next week. Lawrence Green. He's, no, he just chatted. He said he's on, but he can't unmute.
He can't unmute?
Right. So let me, let me say this. Mr. Nelson, this is opportunity knocking. So now, in three minutes, it'll be 20 minutes before we take our lunch break. If it, if it helps you at all, you, we can, we can wait for those, and we can still go forward with those 20 minutes, and you can reverse the order if you like, or we can recess now and have our lunch, and then have your team ready to come back.
We'll proceed, if you want a citizen now, we can call a citizen. If you want to take a lunch break, that's fine. Why not take a lunch break?
Okay, so let's do that. We're going to take a lunch break, and that means we'll be back by 10 after 2.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? So the planning board is going to recess until 10 after 2. Maybe, maybe, make it, make it, make it 2:15, even 2:15. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. You can hear me, right? You can hear me? Okay, thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Wonderful, thank you. Got to double check these days. Okay. So I'm just going to wait and make sure that we have all of our board members and all of the requisite parties back. I do not see everyone yet, so I'm missing a couple of planning board members. And, okay, so we have Macy Nelson. Okay, so we're good. And we have Ms. Dolapowski. Okay, I'm getting there. We have Ms. Ruth Grover. I see we have our principal counsel. Okay, so we just need our vice chair and Mr. Burke. Mr. Burke, are you on? Unmute everybody. Mr. Burke, you're on?
Madam Chair, I'm here.
Okay, wonderful.
I have, I got it.
Okay, okay, so then we, Mr. Burton, are you on?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Wonderful. Okay, Helen Hassan, are you back? Okay, we'll come back to Helen Hassan. So Joshua Bryant, are you on?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so you seem to be muted, Broderick Green.
I'm here.
Okay, wonderful. Mr. Cabot? Mr. Cabot?
I'm here.
It's Cabot, right? You pronounce it Cabot, right?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Cabot, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Mazo?
I'm here, thank you.
Right there, okay. He's still muted. We need to get him to unmute somehow. Okay, Charles Riley, I see that you're on. Hopefully you can hear me. We're sending you an unmute request. We have unmuted you from our side, but you need to unmute from your side. We'll come back to Charles Riley.
I'm all Charles present.
Wonderful, thank you. Ray Crawford?
I'm here.
Charles Harding? Did I see his name? That's, he's the one who... Can you mute me for a second? He's the one who signed up for the wrong case before, 4D. Okay. So we can't, Charles Harding? Okay, now you can. I called them earlier, too. Okay, we'll come back to Charles Harding. Okay, and Lawrence Green, are you on?
Thank you.
Is that you, is that Lawrence Green? Lawrence Green, you're unmuted from our side.
Madam Chair, Macy Nelson speaking. We spoke during the lunch break. He spoke with staff, technical staff, not, IT staff, and I understood they'd sorted out all whatever the issues were. I'll text him.
Right, he's, we see him on. We're looking at it. So let's figure out, we'll, we'll see if we can, what we can do about him right now. Okay? And then, and we do, I do not see Charles Harding signed up at all. I don't see his name on there. Okay. Meanwhile, Ben Ryan, we have you, right?
Good afternoon, I'm present.
Okay, wonderful. Somehow I have Ivy Thompson's, are there Ivy you want? I see you. She's up, go up. I saw her name.
She must, she's muted. She's shaking her head.
I see she's muted. We, we have her unmuted here, but, okay. Oh, there she is. I see her, I see her. Okay. Well, okay. There she is, there she is. We saw her. Ms. Thompson? Oh, she's unmuted, but she's Okay, well, as long, you can hear us, okay. Okay.
Mrs. Lawrence, can you hear me?
Yes! Okay, you're back. Lawrence Green?
Oh, he's on.
We don't have Harding at all. Okay. Okay, so we, so we got everybody that we needed, right? Was that everybody? Okay. So Mr. Nelson was still putting on his opposition case. We had finished with Ruth Grover. I think we were getting ready to go to Lawrence Green. Is that not correct, Mr. Nelson?
That is correct, Madam Chair. So that is our next witness.
Okay, and before you do, I should have said after all this, we are, the planning board is back in session. We are resuming with item five, which is specific design plan 0007-03 for amazon.com. We are resuming with item five, which is specific design plan 0007-03 for Amazon.com services. Okay, so, all right, Mr. Nelson, do you just, do you want to, um, just put him on?
Yes, please. Uh, Mr. Green, this is your opportunity to address the, the planning board.
Hello, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak. Again, my name's Lawrence Green, and I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Maryland, and a nationally recognized professional traffic operations engineer. Um, as you know, the site is currently occupied by a 290,000 square foot warehouse facility. And have approximately 367 parking spaces. Um, based upon a description in the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual, warehouse components are primarily devoted to the storage of materials up to one month on site. The site is proposed to be redeveloped to an Amazon last mile warehouse and distribution facility that will require provisions for increased in and out traffic, traffic activity and parking demand. Although the square footage of the proposed building will not change, the site will require significantly more parking with just under 900 parking spaces, which is a 145% increase in parking. Based upon an inspection of the ITE Trip Generation Manual, the 10th edition, the proposed Amazon last mile warehouse and distribution facility is most closely matching the description of ITE land use code 155, which is a high queue fulfillment center warehouse. Again, according to ITE, a high queue fulfillment center warehouse provides a significant ports function and a direct distribution of the commerce product and users. Therefore, this does appear to be the most, or the best trip generation data available from a national source. Now, the applicant has made an argument that although the site was constructed with 290,000 square feet of warehouse development, the site could have been built with as much as 488,000 square feet under the existing zoning. The applicant prepared an analysis that determined if this larger building was constructed, that the site would have generated 84 AM and 86 PM peak hour trips. And again, that was using the ITE land use code 150 for warehouse developments. So after the applicant discussed with Amazon, their anticipated operation, the applicant's track himself estimated that the site would generate only 2 AM and 85 PM peak hour trips, which was below the level of traffic that could have been generated by the site if a larger 488,000 square foot warehouse was built. Now, this finding was made even though the site would increase parking from 367 spaces to nearly 900 parking spaces. And the parking planning staff agreed with the applicant's findings in their June 19, 2020 memorandum. Now, as I indicated earlier, I believe the ITE Trip Generation Manual trip rate for a high queue fulfillment center warehouse is the most appropriate trip generation rate to use. Well, just five days prior, on June 14, 2020, the parking planning staff agreed with me and recommended that the ITE land use code 155, the high queue fulfillment center generation rates be used in the preliminary planning subdivision case 4-19048, the Washington Gateway, Amazon Development. Specifically, the parking planning staff recommended that the AMP peak hour trip generation rates for land use 155 be utilized, and they also recommended that parking planning heavy industrial trip rates be used during the AMP hour, since these trip rates were slightly higher than ITE high queue fulfillment center warehouse rates during the AMP hour. So if we use the same conclusions that the parking planning staff reached for the Washington Gateway site, um, and we use those in the Collington, Amazon case, the Collington, Amazon would generate 209 AMP hour trips, which is 245% uh, increase over the matter of eight trips for a 488,000 square foot warehouse, and it would generate 298 PM peak hour trips, which is a 363% increase over the matter of eight trips. Therefore, I have concluded that the proposed Amazon site will not only exceed the current 290,000 warehouse trip generation, but also far exceed the 480,000 square foot warehouse that could have been booked. For thus in summary, the applicant's trip path estimate of 84 AM and 86 PM, which totals 170 peak hour trips, be exceeded by the estimated 290 AM and 398 PM, or 688 total trips using the recommended parking planning trip generation rates in the Washington Gateway application. Finally, while I understand that the applicant's goal is to reduce traffic activity during the AM and PMP periods, there is no mechanism in preventing a significant percentage of nearly the 2,400 trips that would be generated by Amazon, uh, from a current AM and PMP periods. Therefore, in concurrence with the parking planning recommendation in the Washington Gateway application, I agree that a more conservative view of the traffic impact from the Amazon facility should be taken. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Green, I appreciate it. Let's see if the board has any questions. Um, probably not, we're probably gonna wait till all the transportation people kick in, but, okay. Madam Vice Chair, any questions?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Washington, any questions?
Not at this time, Madam Chair. I'd rather hear from all the transportation team.
Thank you. Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions at this time, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Mr. Nelson? You want, Mr. Crawford next?
Uh, Madam Chair, I just wanted to confirm that his report and CV on the record, their exhibits, uh, 16 and 17, I just want to make sure.
Yep, we have them.
They're in the administrative record.
We, we do have them, absolutely. I can actually show you, but we have them. They come right into 16 and 18. This is, this is the resume, this is the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the bar was low yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right, all right, that concludes, uh, Mr. Green's comments. Our next, uh, citizen witness is Ray Crawford.
Okay, thank you. Let me make sure, let me make sure we get to them, and then everybody else, please mute. Okay. There's Ray Crawford. Okay, Ray Crawford, you are unmuted from our end.
Okay, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Ray Crawford, I'm here with my wife Kathy Crawford, and we reside at 1340 Crane Highway, directly across the street from this proposed site. Well, we've been here for approximately 25 years. Family, that parcel of land belonged to my family back, and they purchased it back in the 1600s. I mean, excuse me, back in the 1900s, or I should say the early 1900s. And, um, it was actually condemned by the county to make the, to make an airport at that particular time, and now we deal with all of these warehouses. Well, since then, we've been here, um, like I said, for about 25 years. Um, this particular site, this particular site, uh, has, has our concern because of all of the traffic and the noise, air pollution, the noise pollution, that will come across to be over there at that site. Um, even when they had that, the other site, we would always hear those trucks with the backing up in all hours of the night. And our concern is, we will still hear all of those trucks coming at any and all hours of the night. Okay, the facility, you say the facility is not gonna, wanna run between certain hours, but sometimes coming through the traffic just trying to get in and out of our driveway, like I said, which is directly across the street. To get out of our driveway sometimes takes us about 10 minutes to get out. Um, the 301 traffic, they made no provisions for anything that was actually over there on that Collington side, um, since we've been here. Um, even coming out of it, when you say you're coming out of, um, Queens, Queensport, FedEx, they just drive straight across the median strip to go to the north. So if they having more, you're gonna have more accidents that happen up there that's coming out of, coming out of that, that roadway. And like I said, again, that is right in front of my house. Let me get my, get where, where I am.
We saw, we saw the house in, um, it was in, depicted in, um, uh, opponents exhibits one and two. So it was, um, the 1340 Crane Highway, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
You know, at one point, they had the roadway that was actually, we could, you know, come across 301 and actually drive to our house, and they closed that up. So which made it, we have to now drive a quarter of a mile up the road to come back down. You know, so all of this, you're gonna still have more pollution for us having to drive, or anyone who comes to see us to drive. As much as 301, the congestion that's on that with this project, and we just believe that there's gonna be more, more traffic, more pollution, the, yeah, the trash and the services that we actually get already, that we have to go out there and clean up trash off of 301 on a regular basis, because the county's not doing it. So, um, even cutting the grass out there, we have to, we have to do all of these things to keep this thing. So it was like someone said earlier, um, with that, uh, with the, with the project that they're doing down off of 7, 301 and 724, uh, the, uh, the Peerless Project, I think that was called. So you have to, we look at all of that and stop to say, um, what the property value is gonna be when you, when you're talking about having all of these, this commercial warehouses, um, how, how we, you, you, when you actually spoke about, Madam Chair, when you actually spoke about the beginning, was talking about, um, Mr. Lewis and the, and the struggles in which he fought for to actually acquire what he fought for, the equality and the land use and all of that stuff. When you said that, that touched my heart, because that's what my forefathers did when they purchased all of this land. So when it was condemned by the county, and then they put these warehouses over there, what a slap in the face, but my uncles and my dad and all of them, they're now deceased, and they just have the grandkids and, and some of the kids are still alive. But what a slap in the face that now we have million dollar warehouses across the street, you know, and what, I don't know, you know, I was kinda young, so I don't know the monies that they got for the properties. But, um, it just doesn't seem fair, um, that, that we're now gonna let a multi-billion dollar company come in and just do whatever they wanna do for the sake of the county actually making money. Um. And, you know, the, let me get to my last, my last point. Um, the, the parking, you know, as I said earlier, um, we're still gonna deal with so many different cars that's gonna come back and forth over here. Uh, I haven't had any theft problems that's down in here, but, you know, what's gonna happen when you have people who are actually coming, when you're talking about, what, 200 to 300 people that's actually gonna come? And I think most of the people that's down in this area, you know, they, they spend the money. They spend the money, they pay the taxes to live away from the city, you know, far enough away from the city to live in this rural type of community, and then we're gonna clutter this community with all of its commercial properties. And I think that's just something that, you know, we are so, so opposed to have. And I thank you for your time.
So, Mr. Crawford, um, first of all, thank you for your testimony today. Um, we all appreciate it, as we appreciate hearing from every citizen. Um, I'm sure we may have some, a couple of questions, but, um, some of what you said, I wanted to address. One of which is, you've mentioned that, that you have to pick up the trash and even cut the grass, and that should not be. So we had, there's a way to address that with, with the county departments, and we can call, and we can facilitate, we can try to reach out on your behalf as well. Um, because that shouldn't be, you shouldn't have to be, cut county grass, number one, and, 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 um, and we can do some, and see what we can do about the, um, trash and whatnot there on site as well. Um, number two, I wanted to ask you, had you had the opportunity to, it, it, things are a little bit different in this COVID environment, so I don't know, um, to the extent, and I know you're represented by council, so I, I, I don't know if, um, Amazon, uh, if you've had some sort of virtual meeting with Sam, Amazon, so that you could get some information.
Not at all.
Okay, so I would tell you that that's, that's very important, and I hope, um, Ms. Dolapowski, that you're listening to that, because that should be, that should happen, that they should be able to answer, you know, to hear a presentation. Um, you know, uh, now, you know, there were signs posted, I'm sure there were other, there was other notice, but you should have some opportunity to, for a meaningful exchange that was outside of this hearing, so that you could get some questions answered, and so that they could hear your concerns as well. And, um, I'm, I'm, I am hoping that they are, have heard your concerns, what, no matter what happens here today, win, lose, or draw. So, um, I just want to make sure that Ms., uh, Ms. Mazo? I hope you're hearing, and, um, Ms. Dolapowski, I hope you're listening too, because you have a family here who, um, does live in very close proximity. Um, it is an EIA zone, and so some of the uses there are going to be, um, warehouse type uses. Uh, um, and then the other question, but we do want to be compatible, at least with the people who live there, who, who were preexisting. And the other thing is, when you said your family owned this land, how much land, they owned, they owned land that was condemned, and, and then, uh, and then the house where you live now as well, but only, only a portion of it was condemned, is that what you're saying? Okay.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that there's some opportunities, um, for conversations, because that, um, your family history is, 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 is rich in the sense that, you know, not everybody actually has their family history, and, and not, and not everyone in the African-American community, uh, A, had land like that, and B, had the opportunity to, to even learn their family history. And you, and, and there it is, yours is a physical, um, history. So I'm, I'm hoping that, that Amazon is listening to you and, um, and, and reaches out to, to do what they can, depending on what happens here with this case. If it, if it doesn't get approved, that's one thing. If it does get approved, then there's some, hopefully there's something they can do to protect you from the, from the noise and what have you. Um, um, there's something that they can do. Okay, so we'll get back to that. And so let me see if other people have questions of you at this time. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we will hear back from the applicant on this, okay? Um, all right, Mr. Nelson?
Yes, our next witness is Charles Riley.
Okay.
Hi, good afternoon, members of the planning board. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, I, I reside at 16770 Claggett Landing, right around the corner from Ray and Kathy Crawford.
Okay.
Uh, I'm on 8 acres, household of five, and been here 22 years. 30 years in gorgeous Prince George's County. Uh, and, um, I'm located just north of the proposed development on the east side of 301, uh, as, as are the Crawfords. Um, and, uh, I, I wanted to just, uh, say that I support the points of opposition noted by Mr. Macy's team and by the Crawfords, uh, inappropriate definitions as a traditional warehouse and land use codes, uh, missing stormwater data, lack of a transportation study. Um, so I'm not going to repeat those points. I just hope to be value-added in your deliberations, uh, specifically on transportation. I have been deeply involved with local development proposals for, for decades, and so I'd like to give you a, a little, a local perspective, if I may. Um, so my concern here centers today on transportation. I wanted to bring to your attention Exhibit 19, uh, which is a resolution by the planning board.
Yep.
Uh, in 2004.
Yep.
Now, um, I, I will just make a couple of points from that resolution, because there's a lot of, lot of old paper there, but this case and an adjoining property, uh, happened at the same time and started in 2003, and actually didn't finish until, until 2015. Uh, and I think it's relevant to your deliberations. You know, over two decades, we've seen. You know, over two decades, we've seen the steady increasing of traffic along 301 at Trade Zone and the planning board recognized this fact and imposed conditions on two small housing developments, quote, "improve U.S. 301 prior to construction," unquote. And on the resolution in your hands, Exhibit 19, you will see on page 13 that a sentence that says, "Staff's analysis has identified that two additional northbound and southbound through lanes along U.S. 301 would serve to provide LOSC."
Okay.
And the planning board, your, you and your, you and your former colleagues ruled on May 6, 2004, as noted there, approved the preliminary plans for Cadim, Amer and Marshals Landing, quote, "subject to the additional $13.7 million of highway improvements prior to the issuance of building permits." Was appealed, it was reconsidered, but due to the planning board upheld your original decision. This, these two properties are located directly opposite the Amazon proposal site and were, and was upheld as recently as 2015 after a rejected reconsideration request by the property owners. Uh, I'll close by saying that I would like you to be aware of the context of, um, why we feel there needs to be consideration of the context here in the area related to traffic, a proper study. The Liberty Sports Complex, which I believe you have all or partly approved, will bring 344,000 visitors per annum to this area, one-eighth of a mile north of the Trade Zone light. This is, this is a, uh, school buses during the school days and tournaments for the Mid-Atlantic region and lacrosse, field hockey and so on during the weekends. It's county property located just north of Trade Zone. Carrington South Lake is a 300 acre commercial residential development with three hotels, located just north of the single traffic light for Trade Zone. And I'll close by saying that we have a, a, an indication of what we will face in the future. Uh, if, if, if Amazon's allowed to come in without, um, ameliorations or accommodations in related transportation. And that is the FedEx facility is now in Trade Zone. Uh, they're, they're, they're struggling to use the one traffic light on the 301 for the 900 acre property that is Trade Zone. And, uh, they're using the medium strips, uh, uh, day and night for U-turns because they are, they are trying to avoid that light. Residents on the east side are facing long delays getting into, uh, into their driveways like the Crawford said or into roads like Claggett, Swanson, Queen Anne. So I would just simply ask, uh, why shouldn't the planning board require a full study of transportation? You know, why rely on Amazon's trip generation numbers? Uh, and why shouldn't Amazon contribute similarly to other developments, uh, that, that, that requested to be built on U.S. 301? Thank you for your consideration of this local insight and I hope for your wisdom, uh, in this regard.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Let's see if the board has any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Nelson, um, that's, that was it for your list?
Yes, that's, that completes my list. There, there, there may be some other citizens that weren't on my list that might be on the line. I don't know, I can't tell from the screen.
Well, I, that was all that signed up. So other than Mr. Harding, and I keep calling, I keep calling his name. Okay.
Right. Then I think that completes it.
Okay. Charles Harding? Okay, so, um, all right, so let me, let me, um, first turn to, um, Ms. Dolapowski to, um, probably bring her transportation person on, back on Mr. Cabot. And then I would like Mr. Burton to address, and then I'm going to turn to, um, um, Mr. Warner as well, our legal counsel.
Um, Madam Chair, would you like me to just, um, introduce Mr. Cabot to speak to transportation? Or did you want me to briefly address some of the other, um, points that were made, for example, by Mr. Crawford?
Well, that's fine, you could, that's fine. I mean, you get, you're next up, so that's fine.
Okay.
But I do want, and when you finish it.
And his, um, wife for their comments and, um, it's, um, it's definitely a long history out there. And so we certainly understand, um, what you expressed when, when you spoke a little while ago. Um, you know, I would note, obviously, we did follow all of the noticing requirements, um, with regard to sending informational mailings, um, the acceptance notice, both of those go to the mailing list as provided by MCPCC.
Can you tell me whether their names, can you tell me whether their names were on the mailing list?
Um, so there, I, I checked their individual names or not because they are not technically like adjoining or confronting to our property boundaries. But I did confirm, I'm assuming that perhaps both of the speakers were members, are, are located within the Claggett Landing Association. I'm not sure if that's correct, but the Claggett Landing Association was on our mailing list.
So, so when, when a notice goes out to an association like that, we always, first of all, we always ask that associations keep their list updated with us because sometimes as the officers rotate and the outgoing person who received notice typically it's either the correspondent secretary or the president or somebody, sometimes when they're no longer in that position, the information doesn't get passed on to the next person, sometimes. Um, so we always want to make sure that the information is updated. And then, um, and once those notices go out, plus the, plus the property is posted, everyone has the opportunity to reach out and ask questions. You always have the opportunity to reach out and talk with our staff, just as Mr. Nelson did. And you also have the, um, this is just for anything and all future, um, um, matters that may arise. You always have the opportunity to call anyone on our staff because that's, that's important, that's your right. And you also have the opportunity to reach out to the applicant for, for a briefing as well, the homeowners association. Apparently they did not. But I still, notwithstanding that, um, you now have some citizens who are very concerned and it win, lose or draw here, you, you need to engage them. And I'm particularly concerned, um, I'm particularly concerned because the Crawford's property is across, um, you know, across 301 and the, um, and, and both properties are, Mr. Riley's property is too, as he indicated, but it's further north. And I, I, I would expect that if this passes, I would expect Amazon to be a very good neighbor. They've already talked about the trash and whatnot that's going on around there. We would not want the trash, we would not want the noise, we would not want all that backup beep, beep, beeping. And, um, and given their proximity, I think Amazon ought to, ought to consider how they're, how they are going to be good neighbors with these residents there.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. And, and what we will do, as, as you indicated, win, lose or draw today. Um, I know that all of these folks, um, did have to register online, um, with email addresses to speak. So, um, we will reach out to Thomas Burke to get the contact information, um, for our speakers. And I assure you, um, we will definitely coordinate going forward, um, to reach out to them and hear their concerns.
And, uh, and then obviously they're represented by Mr. Nelson, so he would be a part of that as well, okay? Okay.
Of course, right.
Thank you. Okay, so you go ahead in, in the order in which you'd like to proceed.
Um, yeah, so, so that was, I just wanted to touch on that, um, very briefly. Um, and I, I think it makes sense to turn to Chris Cabot, um, uh, to, to address some of the transportation points that were made. You know, overall, I think there's a bit of a fundamental flaw in, um, Mr. Nelson and his team's analysis of the Wells memorandum. They are stating that we use the land use code 150 to determine our site's trip generation, but that is not accurate. The land use code 150 was used to determine the implied trip cap. So to the extent that the argument is that those numbers, uh, generate numbers that are too low, we are actually being very conservative there. To determine our actual trips, that memorandum used our actual operations. Um, and so that is why it very specifically delineates the number of trucks in, in certain hours, the number of trucks out in certain hours, the number of employees in, the number of employees out, all of the phasing. So there's a kind of fundamental flaw in how they're interpreting our memo. And I think Chris Cabot, um, can much better elaborate on that, but I just wanted to tee that up for him and I will turn to Chris now.
Thank you. Mr. Cabot?
Hi, good afternoon. As Heather was saying, uh, Ms. Dolapowski was saying there that the land use code 150 for warehouse, that was used for the, uh, allowed use of up to 400, approximately 480,000 square foot, square feet of warehouse. That was used to calculate the, the trip cap number for, um, that size warehouse. We compared that to the number of trips that would actually be generated by the Amazon delivery station. I do want to point out that land use code 155 that they keep referring to and was used, um, you know, in their study and other studies, um, that is a, a land use and ITE. Put it right there on, in IT manual, it says to use caution. And that is because that land, that trip rate was only based on two, uh, two studies, two data points. And both of those data points, both of those, uh, buildings were very large compared to our use. One was approximately 800,000 square feet and the other one was approximately 1.5 million square feet. And that's just, that's just a flag for the, the traffic engine here to, as, as the institute says, to use caution and to, to use more, uh, other available data. And that's what we did. We used specific data for this specific design plan amendment. We have a specific use here and we essentially know what the, the drywall counts are going to be because of their operation. And again, during the, as I stated earlier, during the AM and PM peak hours, uh, we stay within that trip cap based on those conservative estimates for the warehouse use for the 480,000 square feet. Um, the other point, the comparison between the Washington Gateway Site, uh, obviously I am not, I can't speak to, you know, the determination as to why those trip rates were used for that site. I just wanted to point out that, um, again, that Washington Gateway Site, that is a preliminary plan application. And, you know, perhaps they need some flexibility with who the user might be or what the type of operation might be, uh, for a preliminary plan determination and adequacy determination. Um, and just pointing out again that here we have a specific use for this specific design plan amendment. And we went through with both DEPI and with, with your, uh, planning department staff on the appropriate trip rates to use for, for this determination. And as a result of our study, um, and we remain on, on the trip cap.
You said it.
Um, Heather, if there was anything else you wanted me to point to or if that captures the comments?
I, I think that captured it. We can answer questions you may have.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. Can you, can you go ahead and address? Okay. Um, now let me, let me, can I just say something? I need for folks to not make substantive comments in the chat. That is like letting us know if there's, if you're having any technical difficulties. So that's okay. Now, now we know. So we'll come back to the notice thing in a second. All right. Ms. Dolapowski?
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, like I said, I think, I think we are done sort of responding to the comments, um, from, um, Mr. Nelson, um, at this point, as well as his speakers. Perhaps it may make sense to turn to Mr. Burton, um, and, and your staff with regard to, um, their views on the trips.
And then, and then, um, Mr. Burke, if you could tell us, I'd like to know where the notice was sent, what civic associations and which ones are registered with us. Okay? Okay, Mr. Burke? Okay. Yes?
I'm sorry, I have the list in front of me. Um, I could just, would you like me to read through it or?
That, that's fine. Do you have it on a screen that can be shared or no?
Um, no, I have it on my other computers. You probably know, uh, Lenos and Block are closed.
Yes, I do know. I was going to congratulate you on a nice, um, on, on continued success on a.
Oh, thank you. It's been an adventurous few months, I assure you.
I'm sure.
I, I speak fast. If you'd like, I can just read it. Um, it's not that long and I will just read, um, the associations. It's Greenbrier Condominium, Gabriel's Run Homeowners Association, Village at Collington Condominium, Glen Arden Civic Association, Lake Arbor Civic Association, Green Belt Advocates Fork Cut Off, Hills Over Mulliken Station HOA, Blensford condo, Silverbrook HOA, Ridgeview Estates Homeowners, Bowie Forest Homeowners Association, Seniors RS, Community Association of South, I think that's probably Bowie, Westchester Park Two condos, Flendale Citizens Association, Westlake at Lake Arbor Homeowners, Claggett Landing Association, Northbridge Recreation Association, LLG Recreation Association, Windsor Green Homeowners, Woodmore Estates HOA, York Ferry Homeowners, Carson Dale Civic Association, Villages at Wellington, Columbia Park and Princess Garden slash Hickory Hill. Um, and again, I would just note that the lists are as provided to us, um, by Park and Planning.
Yes, so Park and Plan, we just put it up, thank you. Thank you.
Of course.
There we go. So, so, and that is the list because these are the homeowners associations that are registered with us. And not everyone is registered with us, so we want to make sure that in the future everybody's registered. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so then I'm going to turn to, um, Mr. Burton to address the transportation because there've been some, about the, the 150 versus the 155 and, and, um, and some of the issues that have been raised, um, by the citizens and some, and, and the issues regarding Route 301 and the, um, Amazon, um, um, non-peak hour traffic. And if everyone else can mute their phones. Mr. Burton?
For the record, Glenn Burton with the Transportation Section. There are three separate generation rates that are central to this debate. I honestly don't know how the 150 ITU rates enter the conversation. I can speak to the 155 rate because that was used in the, um, the Gateway case last week. And I was very involved in the use of that generation rate in that traffic study. Uh, so there's a 150 rate, there's a 155 rate from ITE, and then there's a rate that was customized, if you will, for the Amazon operation. I can't speak to their operation, this is what they submit based on their business practice. So I cannot speak to the, the veracity of their generation rate. During the break, I thought maybe the way we could resolve this issue once and for all is to do a side-by-side-by-side comparison between, um, the case last week and the case before us today. There are two perspectives on the issue of trip generation. One has to do with the 290,000 square feet, which is the size of the development that's before us. And then there's another number, which is, which represent 488,000 square feet. That number was derived by applying an FAR flow area ratio to the property in question based on its 28 acre acreage. And that's how that 488,000 square foot was derived. When I apply the ITE 155 code, when I apply that generation rate to both square footage, the 290, which is the subject of the case before us, and the 488, which is implied from previous analyses in years back. The site before us, using the 155 rate, would generate 398 trips in the evening peak hour, which coincided with, with Mr. Green's analysis, the previous speaker. However, when we apply that same rate to the 488 option, which is the implied trip cap, that number jumps up to 669 trips. So again, if you compare apples with apples, the 290 square foot option So again, if you compare apples with apples, the 290 square foot option versus the 488 square foot option using the same ITE 155 rate.
And when you say ITE, I just want to make sure, you're talking about Institute of Transportation Engineers?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That is correct. I apologize for assuming.
That's okay.
I apologize. Yes. That is what I'm saying. And so it just seems like because of this back and forth between what was, what was used last week versus what's used this week, I thought it made sense to apply last week's case with this week's case. And so if we ignore Amazon's unique operational analysis and simply compare 290 square foot of warehousing versus 488,000 square feet of warehousing using the same generation rate, obviously the bigger GFA gross floor area would generate a higher number. So, so if you look at it from that perspective, the implied development cap, if you want to use that term, would yield a higher generation simply because there's more area than the 290 square foot, which is what's before us today. And so my conclusion therefore is that while I may have reached that conclusion using a different path, but I feel comfortable that based on its analysis, the 488,000 square foot implied development cap would still generate a higher number than the 290 square foot, which is before you today. So that's, that's my take on the comparisons between 150 versus 155. As far as the other issues regarding traffic, and I think someone alluded to this earlier, this is not a preliminary plan of substantial. There is no test adequacy. And so from my perspective, this is really a comparison between what is versus what could have been. What could have been was that someone would come in and develop this property with 488,000 square feet of warehousing. They could have, but they didn't. They use a smaller density. So, so this is really, from a transportation standpoint, nothing more than an exercise comparing one GFA versus another. And that's why I didn't think it was appropriate for us to reinvent the wheel, if you will, by reexamining the entire Collington area to see whether we're still under the original cap that was envisioned 30 years ago when the CDP was done. My own experience tells me that if you looked, and while this was not documented in my craw, I think it's safe to say that if you looked totally at what's been built in the larger Collington area to date versus what could have been built 30 years ago when the CDP was envisioned, I am fairly confident that what's on the ground now is far less dense than what could have been or what was envisioned when the CDP was done 28, 30 years ago. So, so from whatever perspective one chooses to look, I am satisfied that the trip cap implied would not be exceeded with the application that's before you today.
Okay, so let me make sure, Mr. Burton, let me make sure I'm with you for a second. So basically, there are a number of ways you could do an analysis and anyway, from your professional perspective, any way you look at it, this, this particular application will generate less trips, less peak hour trips than what could have been under the previous CDP approval. It's a matter of 290 square feet of warehousing versus 488 square feet of warehousing. In addition to that, what, what I'm hearing from the applicant also, if you put that together with what the applicant's saying, even though to generate fewer trips based on their operation, which typically involves non-peak hour traffic, the two things coupled together means that this is likely to generate far less peak hour traffic. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. That's, that's about something.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm following you. Okay. Okay.
30 years of experience.
Excuse me?
30 years of experience.
Right. Okay. Okay. Because we have these transportation experts, I am not one of them. Okay. Okay. Now, I'd like to turn to Mr. Warner because, Mr. Warner, a number of issues have been raised, one, one of which was the use, which, that this, allegedly this is not a warehouse use. And, you know, Mr. Nelson raised a number of issues and some of this was, came up last week. So there was the issue of the traffic analysis and conformance with the CDP and that the use was not permitted, things of that nature. If you can respond to the, the issues that Mr. Nelson raised, the board would like to hear your legal opinion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. David Warner, Principal Counsel. I'll address the, the use question first. So, right, Mr. Nelson is, is, his argument is that it's not a warehouse. Instead, I think he referred to it as a parcel hub or a fulfillment center. I think he used those terms. As Deborah explained last week, and this is probably good to talk about.
You mean Ms. Warner?
Deputy General Counsel explained last week, with a zoning code, staff is always required to look at a static list of table of uses and determine if it's reasonable to specific proposed use within the definition of a use that's listed on the table. And obviously, that's never an exact science in a world where people do a wide range of activities on their property. But as Deborah said, it was certainly, in our opinion and the board's opinion last week, that the same type of facility was reasonably categorized as a warehouse use in that particular zone. And that same use is permitted in this zone as well. And in order to make that determination, the board just needs to have a reasonable basis for making that determination. And you would look to your staff's recommendation, you would look at anything else in the record, which interestingly enough includes material submitted by Mr. Nelson that in fact provides that this is a warehouse use. The, the land use code or the land use 155 section that he is recommending staff use to calculate trip generation is in fact a warehouse use. It's a high cube warehouse, that's how it's defined. And in fact, I looked up the IT definitions for those high cubes and they include in that definition parcel hubs and fulfillment centers as warehouses. So you have evidence in the record from Mr. Nelson as well as from your staff that this is a warehouse use. And I thought that it would be kind of important just to also explain that in situations where you have to make a decision about whether something is a permitted use or not, you're an administrative agency that's given wide deference as to making that decision. Boards will tell you that they rely on an agency's expertise, not theirs, to make determinations specifically about permitted uses. So that's what you have to consider on the use question as to whether this is a warehouse or not. As far as the, the process for approving an SDP, I just want to quickly frame how that process works. Property is, when it's placed into one of these CDZ zones, is zoned and at the same time is zoned, a basic plan is adopted. A basic plan is kind of like a pre-CDP. And following that, CDP is brought forward and approved. And then following that, SDP is brought forward and is approved if it conforms to the CDP. And the CDP conforms to the basic plan follows that process. So I lay that out because they, oh, the Protestants point to the 1978 CDP and they are looking at language in that CDP and trying to apply that CDP. Now, first of all, that CDP allowed warehouse uses, so I don't know that it would be relevant even if it was still applicable. But what happened subsequent to that 1978 CDP is that in the late 80s, several different amendments were adopted by the county council or the district council to adopt new basic plans, to approve on your, on your behalf, new CDPs. And at the same time, the preliminary plan that he referred to in 1989 was adopted. So in other words, the original 1978 CDP has been replaced by subsequent CDPs. So if you look at your staff report, when either Mr. Burton refers to what was evaluated in the CDP 25 or 30 years ago, what staff used to make their determination as to whether this CDP conforms to a CDP, or this SDP allocation conforms to a CDP, that all goes back to the late 80s. Those are the applicable documents. So I just wanted to kind of walk through that step and explain why, even if the 1978 CDP was relevant to this issue, which it isn't because it allows warehouses, if you, if you may have finding that warehouse uses are appropriate, that we are looking at CDPs from the 1980s that are applicable to this property.
Well, I need to stop you and ask a question for a second, Mr. Warner, because you mentioned the CDZ. And, and, and for those, there are a number of people listening. So the CDZ is, is a three-step comprehensive, it's a comprehensive design zone, which is different from the traditional Euclidean zones. So those three steps that you mentioned were specific to this comprehensive design zone, a CDZ.
Exactly.
And, and, okay. I just want to make sure that's clear for the record. And also, thankfully, thank you. So you, go ahead. I just want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah. Exactly. So that's kind of how the zoning process works. And the staff has relied on all of the appropriate CDPs, appropriate basic plans from the late 1980s to evaluate this project. The issue on the transportation impacts, I would only add one thing with regard to that. There's usually always some form of disagreement in all sorts of development applications as to what is the proper rate to use for a particular project. And that's often a debate between the applicant and our staff. In this case, it's also a debate between those that are contesting whether it was done appropriately on Mr. Nelson's behalf and Mr. Nelson's behalf there. And the only thing I'd mention with regard to that is, at the end of the day, whatever rate you choose, if it still complies with the applicable standard, in this case, what was evaluated in the CDP that's appropriate for this project, then you're fine. So I would say that the board needs to just determine if the traffic analysis that was done complies with the CDPs, and Mr. Burton has found that it does, and our transportation staff has found that it does. The last issue, I just want to address real quickly because Mr. Nelson brought it up at the beginning of this presentation. I think it's important to note, he mentioned the PIA, the PIA request that he filed and how it was incomplete, didn't allow him to do the kind of analysis he wanted to do. And since I administered that PIA process with him, I wanted to make sure for the record that, one, we complied completely with the PIA request over and above even what we're required to do under the statute. Their original request on June 24th was to provide, asked us to provide all the information that we had regarding any development application since Collington Center was created in 1978. So he asked for 40 years of all information. And he put in Exhibit 14, my response, which is the response that an agency provides when you get a request like that. You ask for clarification because obviously that could be 100,000 documents since 1978. And so you'll see in our back and forth, and I asked him, okay, what exactly are you asking for when you ask for information? And then he did what everybody that properly perceives from the PIA process does. He clarified, I just want the resolutions that are approved, the relevant applications. Okay. And again, it is 40 years of resolutions.
Forty-two.
Our staff, yes, exactly. Our staff, which ended up using about 80 different staff people's time, was able to generate more than 60 resolutions for him and provide him those resolutions. I never received a message from him, given that I said, please let me know if there's anything in this response that you're wrong with. He never let me know that anything was incomplete. And I just think that staff's efforts on his behalf to set aside their work because he said it was timely, he needed it immediately, and that we provided it with a name business date is remarkable. And while a lot of agencies, in Mar-a-Lago, are using COVID as an excuse not to comply with the PIA, and I'm not saying that you guys doing that or anybody in particular when you read about it, our agency, and I know this because I handle them, has been unbelievably responsive. If every PIA request we get, someone is implying that we were incomplete or didn't provide everything, I just think that we really need to make a point on the record that that is not the case.
Thank you. And so that would explain then, as Mr. Nelson indicated, the $500 some odd dollars for the staff work of eight people to get this information together in a timely fashion because it's public dollars. So we understand that. Not, I, I thank you for sharing that information. It's not determinative for this case, but it's, it's illustrative to know what our staff, I won't say hoops, but the extent to which they really tried, they made yeoman's effort to comply with that request. So I thank you for sharing that because maybe not everyone knew that. Okay. Okay. So now, we, we have Plan Board rules of procedure. So I want to, let me see if our board has any questions of you, Mr. Warner. And then I'm going to go back to Mr., Macy Nelson gets the opportunity to speak and then Ms. Dolapolsky can, can close us out. Okay. Madam Vice Chair, you have any questions for Mr. Warner?
Well, well, no question. But I'm assuming from the comments that PIA is public information.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So Commissioner Washington?
No questions, but I would like to thank Council Warner for including on the record, you know, our staff going above and beyond and being responsive to that request. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Geraldo? Okay, is he muted?
He's muted. Yes. You muted Commissioner Geraldo.
He's talking away. Commissioner Geraldo?
Unmute yourself.
Okay, there we go.
I just want to thank everybody thus far for their presentation and for the professionalism and especially for the residents who came up. But I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to Mr. Nelson.
Thank.
Hold on a second. Let me make sure we have you. Okay, there you are.
Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak. Regarding the PIA issue, I think Principal Counsel misunderstood my argument. Never for a second did I say staff didn't react to the request. They did. My point was that the county does not possess in their files the documents that we need to study to analyze the question traffic. That's a different proposition from saying that staff did or did not produce documents. The staff produced the documents that exist. Our point is that the relevant documents that we need, some of them were lost.
So let me ask you this question. So when Mr. Warner then reached out to you and said, let me know if you need anything else, did you respond?
We got the documents a matter of days ago. The answer is no, because we can look at the timeline and figure out the date that we got the documents, it's a drop block link. There was a question as to whether they had to have the check in their hand before they released it. So no, but this all happened in the last several days.
Okay.
If you want me to go down or look at that.
Okay.
But that was my main point, that not they didn't produce it, but the documents don't exist.
A particular document? Okay. Okay.
We are making legal arguments in this case. We are making the argument that, in this case, technical staff has done, has made several fundamental decisions that are contrary to what has been the practice in the county, and because they're different, they're arbitrary and capricious. And let me just review those. If we go to the staff report at page 12, where they talk about the transportation planning, they use, and what they have to do is, they've been unable to make sense of the 40 years of development history, so they're trying to reverse engineer a trip cap. And so they used, they applied retroactively a four air ratio of 0.4 to generate an implied maximum warehouse building of 488,000 square feet. That decision is an arbitrary and capricious decision that's contrary to every sound land use practice in Bridge George's County. It hasn't been done in other cases. So that decision is flawed. And as a consequence of that flawed decision, the applicant is now allowed to increase the footprint of its proposed warehouse from 290 to 488,000 square feet. So that's one example of an arbitrary and capricious decision.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Mr. Nelson, I'm going to interrupt you, because what I would like to do, if there's questions after each point that you make, so that I'm clear. What I want to know is, how is that flawed? What I understood our staff to say is that the transportation plan is based on 200...
Ninety.
290 square feet. Okay? And now, what they said is, if we went up to 488, that the transportation or the trip caps would be entirely higher. But I'm not sure I understand, because they didn't use the 488. So the fact that typically said, well, if it was 488, it would be this. So I'm trying to figure out where the flaw is.
The flaw, the flaw I'm describing here is to, after the fact, reverse engineer a project to expand the footprint by using a floor air ratio. That is not the practice from our consultants in this county. That there are other constraints that limit the ability to, just because you have the square footage of land, doesn't mean you can build at the maximum capacity. There are development constraints that would limit the footprint. My point is, the decision to use a far of 0.4 to expand the footprint is a flawed premise that's not standard practice, and I would ask staff to give us another example in the last 10 years where they've done it. I don't think they have.
They're not expanding the floor. They're keeping it the same size.
Okay. So let me, Commissioner Geraldo, if you don't mind, can we, I know you have some questions as we go, but I'd like, and we're all trying to keep tabs on the point, so we can follow as well. But if we can extend, Mr. Nelson, the courtesy of going through his list of why he deems us arbitrary and capricious, and then we can respond.
Very good. I will say that you are arbitrary and capricious. I'd say that staff was being arbitrary.
Okay. Thank you for that correction. Okay.
Right. So the second, and on that point, Madam Chair, you opened your remarks by saying citizens can call staff. We called Mr. Burton three times. He never returned our call. Then Mr. Warner told us that we would not be permitted to speak with him directly. We had to funnel questions through Mr. Warner. I believe that was not in accordance with county law, and it certainly violated your mandate on the record earlier, that citizens and their representatives have every opportunity to communicate with staff. So Mr. Burton refused our efforts to speak with him on that issue. I'll just make that point.
Well, typically when people, hold on, I got to respond to that. Typically, when people are represented by counsel, it's very often, very often counsel to counsel. So our counsel couldn't have called your clients without you either. That works both ways. But any John Q. citizen can feel free to call our staff, and I do mean that, and with all candor and all honesty, and people do all the time. So, but I don't know whether that was the citizens or whether that was you, Mr. Nelson.
That was Ruth Grover.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. The second instance in which staff was arbitrary and capricious was the way they treated the Washington Gateway case as compared to this case. Both are an Amazon last mile facility. I would urge you to go back to the hearing last week and think about how the process was described. It was described the same way, except that they had a satellite parking lot. The buildings were roughly the same size, there was the same, everything was the same. Trucks come in, they unload the product, they scurry around and get them into the Amazon prime vans, and off they go outside of Peek-A-All. These are both Amazon last mile facilities. In the Washington Gateway case, staff found that the appropriate land use trip generation rate was 155. Here, they have rejected that and have accepted Amazon's numbers, which are not in the ITE manual, and Mr. Burton said very clearly at his opening remarks that he couldn't verify that. You'll recall that. He said, I can't say that, I can't, I'm looking at my notes, he said something to the effect of, and you can check your own notes, they submitted the numbers, I cannot speak to the veracity of the numbers. I cannot speak to the veracity of the trip generation number presented by the applicant. That's what Mr. Burton said. And yet, seven days ago, he used one trip generation rate, and now, even though he doesn't accept, cannot attest the veracity of Amazon's numbers, he's embarking on a course of action which is fundamentally different from what he did, what the Transportation Section did last week. That, I respectfully suggest, is arbitrary and capricious. The third point I wanted to make was, you know, Counsel for the applicant thought, I didn't understand their traffic report, I heard her comments, I'm thinking she didn't understand my remarks, so maybe we're talking at cross purposes a little bit. Let me try to put my finger on it. We know in the ITE manual that there are various use codes. There's 150 for a traditional warehouse. There's 155 for these Amazon-type distribution facilities. They have fundamentally different trip generation rates. It's our legal position that, in the Collins Center, a warehouse is a permitted use. I believe that everyone thought that the warehouse that's there now is analogous to a warehouse described in ITE manual, Use Code 150. Our legal position, I disagree with Principal Counsel, that this parcel hub does not meet the definition of a warehouse, which is a permitted use, in the Collins Center. That I urge you to go back and think about what you, the board knows about previous warehouses that's approved, and think about what Samantha Mazo, how she described this use. And I ask you to ask the fundamental question. Was Ms. Mazo describing a fundamental warehouse for storage? Or was she describing a unique new use for, where you bring the product in overnight, you have a lot of people in the warehouse putting it in the vans, and out it goes the next morning or next afternoon? And then, then I say to myself, there's a mechanism that the applicant can employ to answer the question, are they a permitted use? The chairman of the Planning Board, Mr. Rhodes, in 1992, in his memorandum, Exhibit 10, lays it out. Now, using the argument I encounter in my cases, Nelson didn't exhaust his administrative remedies. Well, this is a remedy that Amazon had available to it. It should have applied for clarification as to whether this is a permitted use in the Collins Center. In conclusion, we reject Amazon's self-serving trip generation numbers. We note that Mr. Burton couldn't verify the accuracy of those numbers. We urge the Planning Board to critique the trip generate, the traffic at this site in the way it did it last week with land use code 155. And if you do all that, we respectfully suggest that the Planning Board should disapprove the application. Those are my concluding remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nelson. I am now going to turn to Ms. Dolapowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief in just summarizing. I think we probably could go tit-for-tat the rest of the afternoon if we wanted to, but I, you know, with Mr. Nelson, but I don't think that that really serves anyone at this point. Just a few minor points. Staff apparently was very responsive to Mr. Nelson's request, because some of his exhibits that he submitted yesterday included his correspondence, among others, Mr. Burke. With regard to the Washington Gateway project last week, as mentioned at the outset, there are two different applications, two different types of applications between last week's and this week's, preliminary plan of subdivision versus an amendment to a specific design plan. They're very different, with different requirements, different findings, and in that case, while Amazon was the end user, yes, the application was not for Amazon, it was a preliminary plan of subdivision for a property. Here, we have actual operational details of the site, and that is why the trip cap analysis was done the way that it was, and based on the actual numbers coming in and out at the actual times. With regard to the use issue, it's been discussed significantly over a number of hearings, including today's. I think it is quite clear that the Amazon facility is a warehouse. That has been very clearly established by Park and Planning staff, and, you know, the world evolves, and Amazon is the warehouse of today. Just two final closing points, not necessarily rebuttal. We absolutely are committed to being a good neighbor. I've already started a draft email to Thomas Burke, which I will send as soon as this hearing concludes, notwithstanding the result, asking for the email addresses of Mr. Riley and the proffered, so that Amazon can reach out to them and start just having a dialogue, because that is very important. So I'll send that email to Thomas Burke very shortly. And then just to circle back on, seems like a lifetime ago, but Commissioner Geraldo had asked about bike racks, and we are able to, we can put 10 racks on the site total, that would accommodate 20 bikes, and we are happy to do that, and we can certainly take that as a condition of approval, if you'd like us to, I guess phrase it, that, you know, 10 bike racks must be shown on the plans prior to certification. Again, if you, and we would be happy to take that as a condition of approval.
So let me make sure I understand that part. So since you went back and talked with your client on that, then I'm taking that as your proffer, which we will put in the resolution if this goes forward, that you will, that you have agreed to submit 10 bike, to apply 10 bike racks, and which, and that will be prior to certification, that they will be shown?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Were you done?
Yes, that is all I have to say. Yes, thank you.
Okay. I want to make one correction or enhancement to something that you said. You mentioned that about the Amazon, this last mile being a warehouse, and that it was already been determined by planning staff, but it was not just determined by planning staff, it was determined by this planning board, decision makers. The planning staff did recommend it to us, it was also explained to us by legal. I know that Mr. Nelson does not agree with that interpretation. We discussed this at length last week during the Washington Gateway hearing, we discussed it again this week, and what some way call arbitrary and capricious, I will call fairly debatable. Our decision is that this is, this is a warehouse. There's no precise definition for every conceivable use that can come up in this antiquated ordinance. And so you look at something that's very, very closely related, it was stated very clearly today by Counsel Warner, and it was stated very clearly last week by Deputy General Counsel Deborah Borden, and the Planning Board agreed with that. So I just want to make sure that that's on the record as well. Okay. Okay. So that was it for you. Let me see if the board has anything else to add, or Mr. Warner, if you have anything else to add. Mr. Warner, do you have anything else to add?
No, I do not, other than, in addition to our response on the PIA request, I do have emails from 12 different staff members that communicated with Mr. Gray, Mr. Nelson, and Ms. Grover on this application.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Okay. So let me see if the board has any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No, Madam.
Commissioner Washington?
My only question, and Ms. Dolapowski just answered, was with regards to the bicycle racks. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve SDB-0007-03 and TCP-2-067-96-07, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report, and it should also include the applicant proffered conditions with regards to placement of 10 bicycle racks, and must be shown on the plans prior to certification.
Second?
We have a motion, second. Is there, was that you, Commissioner Geraldo was the second, or, okay. Is there discussion?
I just want to thank everybody again, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Under discussion, I too want to say two things with regard to our findings, because Mr. Nelson has indicated that the staff's actions were arbitrary and capricious. I would just say, labeling them as arbitrary and capricious does not make it so. That is his professional legal opinion, to which he is entitled, he's been practicing many, many years, several of us understand our attorneys as well. I would say definitively that they are not arbitrary and capricious, and that they are well thought out, and they're not all legal interpretations. Some of these are findings of fact, and that, and Mr. Warner mentioned this earlier, that typically courts will provide deference to the decisions of the entity, the agency with the expertise on these categories, including use categories. I'd also like to thank everyone for coming out. What I would like for Amazon to really, really listen to, and I heard you, Ms. Dolapowski, but this is an EIA zone, and, but nonetheless, there are still houses in proximity. And I'm telling you, I need, we need to know, you've committed on the record to talk with these citizens who live there, but we were all very moved by their remarks, all very moved about the difference that this may make in, to their lifestyle, in their homes, in their property. People who have lived there for many, many years, many decades, and in one case... People who have lived there for many, many years, many decades, and in one case, you know, well over a century. So this is very, very important. So reaching out to them and making sure that they have involvement, that they are heard, you may not be able to do everything, you know, but they are heard sincerely, in earnest, is very, very important to us. So I just wanted to make sure that that's really, really clear. We thank you for making that offer to reach out to them and starting your email already. And we thank you for the proffer of the bike racks as well. And to the citizens, we really thank you for your interest here, and for your participation, and for your earnest comments, and hanging with us all day, so we appreciate that. I'm going to call for the vote. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I vote aye, Madam Chair.
Okay, the ayes have it, 4-0. Thank you very much, everyone. Please stay safe. I usually make this announcement at the very end, but we do say that we thank everyone for their flexibility and cooperation and support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving. Today has been a little slightly challenging because of, I think it's because of the weather, because we had traffic lights and whatnot out here yesterday, and it's hot as heck up in here. But we proceeded, and everyone's done extraordinarily well, and we're thankful for that. We ask that you make every effort to stay safe, to look out for one another, to stay strong, to stay resilient, to stay woke, and remain ever hopeful as we strive to get through these challenging times together. Thank you very much, and we will now turn to Item 3A.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Planning Director?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Am I being heard?
No.
I think the battery on this thing.
There, I think that's it. Can you say something?
It says it's green. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For your consideration today is a previously reviewed piece of legislation, CB 41, 2020. Since the staff first brought this to you a couple of weeks ago, relevant, significant information was brought to my attention concerning our recommendation on this bill, and we had to look at it again from a different perspective. And so we have decided, staff, after considerable thought and discussion, that this is not something that we would recommend the board oppose. We are recommending that the board absolutely vote to support this bill.
Madam Chair, I move approval of staff's recommendation to support CB 41, 2020.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I vote aye.
Okay. Mr. Hunt, are you with us?
You didn't say the ayes.
Excuse me?
You didn't say the ayes.
Yes, Madam Chair.
The ayes have it, from 4-0. I knew that.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hunt, you're on, right?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here.
Listen up, Mr. Hunt. Is there any additional business to come before the planning board today?
There are no additional business items before the planning board today.
Planning board is adjourned. Thank you very much, team. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Marty.
Bye-bye.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye.